Good evening, Hopkinton. Please take your seats. I am your town moderator, Ellen Rutter, and we are now calling the 2024 Special Town Meeting to Order. We are going to go over abbreviated opening for folks who maybe haven't been here last night or any other time. So we'll start with the rules of the hall. Whether it's your first, 10th, or 25th meeting, we appreciate that you are engaged in this important civic activity.
Ellen, we can't hear you back here. We can't hear you. The mic's not on.
Yeah, the mic is on.
Try that one out, see if it works.
Okay, can you hear me now? Well, people need to be able to hear me, so can you hear me?
No.
Try this for right now, until we get someone.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that, thank you. Do I need to call the meeting to order again?
Yes.
Okay. Here we go. Good evening, Hopkinton. I am your town moderator, Ellen Rutter, and we are now calling the 2024 Special Town Meeting to Order. So I'm going to go through an abbreviated set of rules of the hall and guidelines for people who maybe weren't here last night or haven't even ever been to a town meeting. Whether it's your first, 10th, or 25th meeting, we appreciate that you are engaged in this important civic activity. I'd like to remind everyone that town meeting is just the first part of our two-part May activity. On May 20th, we will cast our votes on the ballot questions that we approve here at town meeting, along with holding elections for open seats on town committees and boards. Welcome to our registered voters. If you are a registered voter, when you came in, you should have gotten a clicker. This is how we're voting. So if you're a registered voter and for some reason you didn't get one, please, please go back out and get one. Welcome to our townspeople who are not registered voters. There is a special section for you to sit in this evening. Town employees who are part of the meeting process may sit up here in the front. You can see some section cordoned off for you. We also welcome our visitors who are not residents of the town. You should have gotten a pass, and also you would sit up here to my stage right. For the media, we have dedicated seating in the front where John Cardillo is. Please do stay seated unless you're stepping out for a break or approaching the mic to speak. Please note that I do not plan to take any formal breaks tonight during the meeting, even as we go from the Special Town Meeting back to the Town Meeting warrant. We are using electronic voting again during town meeting. While your device has a number on it, and your vote is connected to your device, your device is not connected to you. So we are not keeping track. We have no idea how any individual person is voting. When we opened the voting, what we found last night is within about 30 seconds, all the votes were cast. So when it comes up, please do cast your vote pretty quickly. You can vote one time, and once you've pressed a button, you've activated the voting. So you have to vote yes or no. Yes is a green button, no is a red button. If you, for some reason, want to abstain from any article, then just don't press any button, and nothing will get tallied. So Nicole, did you want to say some other things about the voters, the clickers, I mean?
I'm Nicole Aveo-Brian, your Assistant Town Clerk. I've left this on a grid right here. Each of your clickers has a number on the back of it. And once you select yes or no, pretty much any button, that number on the grid will light up. If you can't see the grid, and I've been scrolling through, come back to me at the computer in the back. I can tell you if your clicker's working. If it's not, we can do a one-for-one swap. I have clickers in here, and if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. So if you have a clicker and the box is gray, you should try voting, and it should light up. If it doesn't, please go see Nicole. All right. So water is allowed in the auditorium. Other drinks and food and smoking are not permitted. Please do turn off devices or mute them. So I'm going to go over how the meeting flows a little bit. So I just introduced the name of the article, then I will invite, in general, it is Mike up here who will make the motion. In most cases, I ask the board chairs to share their committee recommendations. The article's sponsor may be making a presentation. I think for most of the articles, we do have that. For all presentations tonight, I have asked people to be at eight minutes or under. We do have a timer here, and we will hold people to that eight minutes. After the presentation, we open the floor to questions. When you approach the mic, so you can come to one of the two mics on either side, please wait for me to recognize you. Then each time you approach the mic, please introduce yourself with your name and your We also have a timer for when people come to speak. The timer's there, it's two minutes. You have two minutes to speak. Please wrap up at two minutes. I may remind you, when your time is up, please stop at two minutes. You should state at the beginning whether you are for or against the article. Then be clear in your position and get to your point quickly. If you have comments or questions, please direct them through me. You should not be asking them directly to anyone who either presented or anyone else other, just through me. So the protocol would be saying something like, "Through you, Madam Moderator, I'd like to understand more about XYZ." And then we'll make sure the right person can answer. This is not a debate. Please return to your seat at the conclusion of your two minutes. You may be able to approach the mic again if everyone else has had an opportunity to speak. There may be reasons, if somebody calls a question or something like that, that a person only speaks one time. I will also ask you to confirm that you're saying something different. You may not come up and say the same thing again. And no resident may speak more than twice on any article. Often, the best argument is the most concise one. When the discussion is over, we will vote on the article. We will have about 30 seconds from the time we open the voting till you cast your electronic vote. There's a little counter in the corner, so we have a good idea about how many people have voted. The total number of votes is visible on the screen, and only after we close voting does the results show up. Do we have the one voting remote? Do we have the remote home person?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have one person who has an ADA accommodation, and so when I read the numbers, there will be one extra vote, either in the yes or no, and that's because we're adding that vote in. As we mentioned before, if you have an issue with your clicker, please head to the back to see Nicole, and she can help you. I'd like to remind everybody that we are neighbors before, and we will be neighbors again after town meeting. Let's maintain our civility. Let's keep our minds open, and let's remember that contrary opinions can strengthen our discourse. Debate can enrich us. Discussion will result in the best course of action for Hopkinton. I now call on Town Clerk Connor Deegan for the call and return of the Special Town Meeting warrant.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. To the constables of the town of Hopkinton, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required to notify and warn all inhabitants of the town of Hopkinton qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs of the Special Town Meeting warrant this day, Tuesday, May 7, 2024. Hear of and fail not, and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the clerk of said town of Hopkinton at the time and place aforesaid, given under our hands this seventh day of May 2024.
So a little sidebar editorial. We don't actually speak that way. We are guided by town meeting time and then some state bylaws on how we run these meetings. This book is, I think, 160 pages long. So if you ask me a question that I'm not sure, or someone makes a point of order, we're so lucky we have Town Council here, because they know the intricacies better than I do. So that's, last night, we had a couple situations where I was asking them for guidance based on town meeting time. So now I call on the Chair of the Select Board, Muriel Kramer, on customary measures relating to the time of this meeting.
Madam Moderator, I move that we conclude the business this evening with the article under discussion at the time or soon before the time the hour turns 11:00. That doesn't necessarily have to be the special. We could finish the special sooner, certainly, and move on to the annual town meeting.
Did everybody hear that? Okay, so the motion is that we wrap up around 11:00 p.m. Shall we try our clickers on this? Is that just a simple majority?
It's a simple majority.
Okay, so this is a good practice. So we need a simple majority to agree that we're going to end around 11:00. We're going, yeah, we're going to use the clickers. Please open the vote. So again, you're pressing the green button if you want to end by 11:00, and you're pressing the red button if you have a different idea. Okay, so the voting looks like it slowed down a little. You got a couple more seconds. If you want to end by 11:00, please press the green button. If you want to do something different, red button. Okay, Nicole, you could close the voting. There we go. Okay. So this passes, that means that around 11:00, we'll wrap up what we're doing, and then hopefully we'll be done for this whole 2024 town meeting, or else we'll come back tomorrow night. Okay, yes, at home. Okay, so it's 236 yes and 18 no. So with regard to the ordering of the articles, now is the one time during the meeting we will entertain a request to rearrange. Does anyone have a request to change the order? So seeing there is none, we will move to Article 1, and we are in the Special Town Meeting Article 1 is a public works vehicle replacement. Is there a motion?
Yes. Article 1, Public Works Vehicle Replacement. We move the motion as printed in the Special Town Meeting Warrant Articles and Motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
The mic isn't working. Did you toggle it? Well, you need to toggle it, because it might not have been turned on, please. No. There you go.
Greetings from the beach, everybody. Capital recommends approval.
Thank you.
In this motion, we are recommending the transfer of $47,195.50. This will be a transfer from the following unspent capital appropriations. This amount was from a sidewalks master plan that was from town meeting in 2016. This amount, this $47,000, is a partial of the total cost. This was a public works vehicle that was damaged in a fire, needs to be replaced. About $75,000 of it is covered by insurance, and this is the remaining amount.
Karen, I think, you had a slide on this one, right? Okay, I think there is a slide on this one. So we had good luck yesterday with having these slides kind of up here in a reactive fashion. Does anyone have a question? And we can have our Director of Public Works answer any question. Hi.
Mary Arnot, 51 Teresa Road. Since this is a replacement, I'm wondering if my question's going to be really valid, but I'm curious about the vehicles that we have in the articles for the DPW, and I was wondering if, instead of buying a total replacement, can we buy the plow and sander and use it on one of the other trucks that we'll be buying, and will that save us any money?
Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Do you want to tap it and see?
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Carrie Reed, Director of Public Works, to answer your question. All the replacement vehicles replace what's existing in our fleet, and no, we do not have another vehicle to put the sander and plow equipment on. As you can see from these photos, and I want everybody to know that our Public Works employee was able to get out of this. This was an incident that happened in January where the truck completely caught on fire as they were responding in the late evening to snow and ice, and I want to thank the Fire Department for their quick response to that. But this vehicle is used to support, like, the cemetery and parks maintenance, and at this point, we're renting our vehicle to try to get it through the summer, so we really need this one replaced.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Should I just go to a phone? Oh, okay. Hi.
Brian Douglas, 14 Greenwood Road. This is maybe just for my own education. Hopefully, there's some.
Can people hear?
Hopefully, there's somebody else in the room that also doesn't know the answer this. So last night in...
So we need to stay...
No, it's related to this. I'm just, I'm curious. So why is this particular article separate from the list of other town equipment that was listed in an article last night? We had a street sweeper, we had another super duty pickup. Why is this one separate from the warrant from last night?
That's a really easy question, because this caught on fire in January, and the warrant had already been submitted.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Since this is a simple majority, I will have a voice vote. All in favor of Article 1, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Do you have the home vote? Okay. No. Okay, so we don't, we didn't register the at-home vote yet, but the hall was unanimous, so Article 1 passes as a yes. Okay, Article 2, Main Street Fire Station HVAC Upgrade. Is there a motion?
Yes. Article 2, Main Street Fire Station HVAC Upgrade. We move the motion as printed in the Special Town Meeting Warrant Articles and Motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
I don't know why I'm not on there, but this came before us, and we do recommend approval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are recommending $404,000 from free cash to pay for a new HVAC system for the fire station. This is, this system is 27 years old. There are leaks that are causing problems, and it is in need of replacement.
Do we have a slide on this one? Eileen, were you going to speak to this, or do you want to just see if there's questions? Or Dave? Do you want to speak? Do you want to come and speak to it? We can either, you can either speak to it, or you can see if there's questions, whichever way you prefer.
If there's questions, we'll go from there.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Madam Moderator, Peter Thomas, 21 Pond Street. The fire station was built in 1997. The HVAC systems, C-systems, have reached end of life. When it rains, it actually rains inside the firehouse. Our first responders are forced to deploy buckets. The training room, which is full of expensive computer equipment, has a line of water dripping from the ceiling. Note that this is not because the roof leaks, it is because the HVAC has rusted through. It also leaks in the men's room. The firefighters then mop it up. These are the men and women that protect us. They show up every day without complaint and literally save lives. We owe them more than just a debt of gratitude, we owe them a safe place to work. My neighbors, I urge you to approve this measure.
Thank you. Please don't clap, we're not doing clapping at town meeting. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Amy Groves, 2 College Street. Just a question. Did we take a look at the different kinds of technologies when we talked about replacing the HVAC? Are we just replacing it with more fossil fuel, old-fashioned stuff, or have we evaluated it for heat pumps, which might be, get us a rebate and maybe be cheaper in the long run as well? I don't want to put the kibosh on this, but I'm just a little bit worried that we're investing in something that we're not going to be happy with.
Thank you.
David Deltorio, I'm the town engineer.
Hold on, let's make sure that doesn't sound like it's on.
Can everyone hear me?
There you go, yep.
Sorry. David Deltorio, Town Engineer, Facilities Director. The equipment being replaced at the rooftop condensing units, they're more modern, they're more energy efficient. Entire heating and cooling system wasn't analyzed as part of this project. A few years ago, the boiler in the fire station was replaced. It said it failed. It was an emergency replacement. But the equipment being proposed to replace the old equipment is newer, more efficient equipment, and it has additional filtration capacity, and it also has the ability to put in some additional treatment for such as ozone or something.
Through the moderator, may I ask a follow-on question?
Sure.
If we're investing, so I understand that we're kind of, do an incremental fix here, which is needed, and it's going to be kind of, it'll be more efficient, but it won't be using heat pumps. So can I ask how long we'll be kind of locked in with this fire station to the old, you know, technologies?
So is your question, what would be the lifespan of the new equipment?
Yeah, how long are we going to be locked into this?
Okay, thank you.
New HVAC equipment can last up to 15 years.
So either we have to turn those off myself, or we have to turn that off, because I can't hear it well enough. Okay, we're just down, okay, thank you.
Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis Road. Madam Moderator, through you, I actually just wanted to make a quick comment about this process, to really talk about just briefly how impressed I was with both engineering and fire. When this was presented to Capitol, we had a really nice discussion about the proactive measures that both town engineering and the chief had taken to collaborate with the unions to ensure a lack of interruption. If you vote to approve this, this repair will be taking place in the middle of July. I think it might be hot. We had some significant concern that we wouldn't be able to accommodate, as Peter said, our heroes in the Fire Department. Through proactive discussion with the union, collaboration with other departments in town, and other efforts, we are going to be able to do a phased approach to the project and keep everybody cool while giving them the upgrade that they deserve. So we talk a lot about dollars and cents here, and I'm happy that we do, but we occasionally need to celebrate the little parts of the process that you don't see here. This was one that was really well done, and it was thoughtful for the people involved and the people most impacted, and I thought you all should hear that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is also a simple majority, so we'll do a voice vote. All in favor of Article 2, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Do you have the home? Okay. So this passes, and we're just waiting to get the home vote. Article 3, the Woodville Fire Station Repairs, is there a motion?
Yes. Article 3, Woodville Fire Station Repairs. We move the motion as printed in the Special Town Meeting Warrant Articles and Motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
We've once again been unintentionally omitted, I'm sure, but Capitol recommends approval.
Thank you.
Okay, essentially, this is a motion where we have $236,176 in free cash, and also transfer $92,824 in unspent capital appropriation from police station roof replacement for a total of $329,000. Essentially, this is to repair the fire station repairs. There was an appropriation last year at town meeting, but once they started looking at it, there was more damage, and so more funding is needed for this project.
Do we have slides on this? Here we go. Okay, yes, go ahead.
Peter Thomas, 21 Pond. If you can't tell, I'm a fan of the Fire Department. The Woodville Fire Station has not been staffed since the COVID pandemic. It is an old building, and it has many problems, including broken windows and leaks. More importantly, it is too small. It cannot accommodate female firefighters, because it doesn't have a separate changing area. Worse, when our firefighters return from a call, and as they take off their gear, the ash, ember, and chemicals go directly into the kitchen area, where the staff prepares meals and eats. This is hazardous to their health. The consequences of this can be deadly. On a winter day, when there is snow on the ground, it can take as long as 14 minutes for a fire truck to make it from the firehouse on Spring Street, sorry, from the main station to a house on Spring Street. From Woodville, it would be less than seven minutes. Now, most of the calls our department responds to are medically related. So in a cardiac arrest, seven minutes can make the difference in saving a life. We have to invest and bring this important station back online. Please vote yes for this.
Thank you. Please don't clap, thank you. Yes.
Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis Road. But I suppose as Capitol here is, well, I stand in support of this, but I want to make sure that we're being transparent about what you are voting on here. To approve this does not bring this fire station back to a full service and staffing level. Right now, the state of the Woodville Fire Station is such that it is not even an adequate repair, excuse me, storage facility. We have a new fire truck in there right now that's being literally rained on, and we're taking damage against an asset for negative appreciation. That's not what we want to do. But you need to understand, you're not voting today to bring this back to a full staffing level. You are voting today to make necessary repairs so that this can be adequately used for storage, training, and other activities, and to further the goal of bringing this back to a full state of usability, which I would fully support. So please don't hear this as a negative. I just want you to understand fully what you are voting on, especially after the last presenter. This doesn't bring it back to use, it brings it into a state of other repair for both the Fire Department and for the town at large. Many of the other departments are looking forward to... Many of the other departments are looking forward to being able to store things there.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Dave, did you want to have any response to anything that has been said? All right, so seeing that there's no further discussion, we need a simple majority on Article Three, the Woodville Fire Station Repairs. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, on to Article Four, Land Disposition Zero Hayward Street. Is there a motion?
Article Four, Special Town Meeting, Zero Hayward Street Land Disposition. We move that the town authorize the Select Board on behalf of the town to sell or otherwise dispose of the sale real property at Zero Hayward shown on Assessor's Map, L36320, consisting of approximately 5,663 square feet of land, as well as all buildings and apparent tense and apparent, apparent nonsense thereon, under such terms and conditions as it may determine, and in furtherance of said authorization, to transfer care, custody, and control of said land to the Select Board. Select Board recommends approval.
Okay. It looks like there may be some comments. Hi, please introduce your, yourself.
Good evening, I'm Alice Penn.
Hi, can you lift your mic or get closer to it because we didn't quite hear you?
All right. Good evening, my name is Alice Penn. I'm here tonight to request the disposition of a town lot. We're part of my home.
So can you, you need to keep your face really close to the mic so we can hear you. There we go.
Okay. We're part of my home at 2 Woody Island Road lies. In the almost 60 years that I have lived in my home, I raised a family of three, celebrated birthdays, holidays, and have many fond memories. In an ideal world, I would have had continued to reside here for the rest of my life. However, there have been several unfortunate events recently that will prevent me from doing this. In 2015, my husband was diagnosed with cancer. He passed away a few months later. Until he was diagnosed, my husband was very healthy and did much to upkeep the home, including maintaining the grounds, fixing small issues with the house, and chopping and loading firework into our wood stove, the sole heat surface of the home each winter. As I am in my 80s, it has become increasingly more difficult for me to perform all the duties of my husband. More still, in 2023, I was diagnosed with cancer and needed to undergo several surgeries and rounds of chemotherapy. Thankfully, I am in remission, but remain weak from what I had to endure. Needless to say, I am not able to do what I once was able to do for our home. For all these reasons, I decided to sell my home in October of 2023. I'd listed the home, and it was under agreement and to be sold to a builder who had planned to extend the footprint of the house and improve the structure, which would also improve the overall neighborhood.
Can we ask you, can you, can you come to the, the conclusion? Because am I right that you learned that part of your property was town property?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So can we summarize that so everybody here can under, understand kind of what this question is about?
I have it down here.
Okay.
I have it on here that we found out.
Yeah, so you, so the thing is, you're out of time, so could you just, can you just say that the situation we're trying to address here, please?
Okay. I am looking, I'm not looking for a handout, but simply trying to make it possible for me to sell my home, to improve the land and neighborhood, and to provide a great home for the new homeowners. I want this to benefit to our parties involved.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so I did, I want to make sure people understand, it appears that when she went to sell her property, some part of her property, I think including part of her house, actually is owned by the town, so that her, it's something, and I think someone will speak to it in a little more detail, but the, the question is if we can help bring that, bring the whole property together so she can sell it. So yes, go ahead, Darlene.
Darlene Hayes, 1 Third Road. Please support this. Mrs. Penn's my neighbor. This is one of the older cottages. My house was originally a cottage. These lots were cut up so weirdly in our neighborhood, and they were given to soldiers coming back and families for years. Please just support this so she can actually have resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Arnot, 51 Teresa Road. I'm not opposed to the article, I'm just looking for some clarifications. So somehow, at some point, the town owned this .13 acre. Do we know how the town acquired it, or when?
We don't. I think I'm, I'm seeing people shaking their head. I don't believe we do, and we, I bel, no, I don't believe we do know how.
Okay. May I ask a second part, Madam, Madam Moderator? Do we have an idea of, because it says sell it, but are we selling it for profit, or how is the sale going to work to help out this situation?
I don't know. Elaine, do you, do you want to speak to that?
Elaine Lazarus, interim town manager. It's not anticipated that the town would, would seek a purchase price for this.
At all?
The, the house is on the line, as you see.
Okay.
So there is an assess, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Moderator. I've just, because I was looking up the, the property online today, trying to figure this out a little bit, and so there is an assessment on this piece of property in our database online. I think it's assessed at like $18,000 or something. It went up over the years.
So is your, your question is, are we asking, what, can you just say what the question is, please?
It's a difficult situation. I'm just trying to figure out in my head, do I support just giving the property, or is there another course of action that should be taken? I don't want to seem cold-hearted or anything. I just was wondering when I looked up the value of the property.
Okay, thank you. You're at time, thank you. Go ahead, Elaine.
Elaine Lazarus, I just wanted to note that the parcel.
Can people hear Elaine?
No. Okay. I just wanted to notice, note that the parcel referenced is actually the two lots that say Town of Hopkinton there. On the town GIS map, that's one lot, so the town does not have to dispose of the entire lot, just half of it.
Thank you, yes.
Euro Kramer, 39 North Street. Speaking as a private citizen, I rise in support of this. This is one of those really complicated questions with a really straightforward answer from town meeting, if town meeting gets behind it. You've heard that half of the house is on her property, half of the house is on our property. We're unlikely to be able to capitalize on a sale with half of her home on that, even if we wanted to. We really just want to make sure we support the right resolution here, and so I encourage people to vote yes.
Thank you.
Kyle Smith, 25 Amherst, also a neighbor. Correct me if I'm wrong, but based on the dimensions of the lot, it would not be buildable and has no value otherwise? Sorry, through you, Madam.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So to me, this seems like a no-brainer, strongly in support. I think we should.
Thank you.
Through you, Madam, Madam Moderator, 211 Winter Street. Also want to point out that the property, when we're talking about selling it, it's basically worthless because there's half a house on it. Really, what we're trying to do here is just resolve an issue, and I, you know, for, for a woman who really needs some help. So I encourage everybody to vote for this.
Thank you.
Hi, Sabine St. Pierre, 1 Woody Island Road. I'm right across the street from Alice on the left. We've been neighbors with her for about six, 18 years, actually. I think her family's been there about 90 years. We talk a lot here about senior citizens in our town, and longevity, and wanting people to stay here. You know, we, we just built our retirement home, so our plan is to stay here. So I think, you know, it, it is a no-brainer that, you know, they've been here for a long time, and to do the right thing, she's raised her family here, she's dedicated her life to the town of Hopkinton. So I think this is how we give back to her.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no other questions or comments, this is, it says simple. All right, okay. So because this requires two-thirds vote, we'd like to do a, an electronic clicker vote,
Two-thirds, yeah.
Thank you.
Does it say it is? Oh, no, it doesn't say, there you go, just change it.
There we go. Okay, please open the voting. All right, you may vote now. Green is yes, red is no. Okay, I see the voting is slowing down, so if you haven't had a chance yet, please do make sure to cast your vote on your clicker. Okay, Nicole, can you please close the voting? Thank you. Okay. So we see 282, including the at-home vote that was yes, and 11 no, so this passes. Okay, we are moving to Article Five. This is a citizen's petition to appoint Sergeant Timothy J. Brown. And, what's that? Brennan, sorry, I know, I know you, Tim, sorry. And, and is the person, so I've been communicating with somebody, are you here to give the presentation? Callie, yep.
So if I move Article Five as written in the warrant, and Karen Crum is going to give the presentation on my behalf.
Okay. And so if you want to come, okay, do we have a second for this article? Okay. And then we have a presentation here, and, and you'll have eight minutes, okay?
Great, thank you. Karen Crum, 12 Joseph Road. I, this motion is symbolic. I will level with everybody here. We are just directing the Select Board to appoint Timothy J. Brennan to the rank of Sergeant. We are not the appointing authority for police officers. It's in the Charter, Section 3.1, that the Select Board is the appointing authority. We have no control over what these five people will do, or the next five. But what we do have the ability to do is send a clear message about what we believe is the right thing to do and what we want them to do. It's up to them to decide whether they're going to respect our wishes or not. Next slide, please. I imagine that every person in this room has an opinion about the Tim Brennan case. Therefore, I will not share my own, and I will stick to facts. I found myself so extraordinarily upset by how I perceived what was happening when I was reading about this case, so I committed myself to diving into it. I found the infamous Kroll reports and read the combined 164 pages of interviews several times, and I read through every town and police department manual. I am not exactly sure why I refused to let it go, but I guess I just don't like standing by watching something that I felt was an injustice. Maybe you don't think this vote is going to make a difference because the Select Board has not done what they have been directed to do in prior town meetings. I get it. Residents have expressed their wishes at public forum after public forum, letter after letter to the Select Board. In fact, 67 residents have spoken at public forums since January 30th of this year, all advocating that Tim Brennan should not have been terminated. So next slide, please. The Loudmill hearing this past January was the first time everyone was able to hear from both sides. I'm not going to relitigate the case, but I will share a few important facts surrounding the allegations against Sergeant Brennan, because it's important to clear up a few things that caused a lot of confusion. It's important for the entire Brennan family, and it's important for everyone here to know that Tim Brennan was wrongfully terminated. There were so many red flags in the Kroll reports. The interviews and the final report dates didn't match. Dates of significant findings were redacted. What investigator redacts dates? The information was presented by the town in such a way that you might think the victim was actually a minor at the time Sergeant Brennan first heard her mention anything about inappropriate interactions with Porter. This is absolutely false. What is true is that he didn't report the crime to his own chief. Let's think about this for a moment. The victim was then 32. She wants to report it. She doesn't live in Hopkinton. Brennan knows the DA's office is the most effective way to report this for a proper victim interview and the best outcome for a criminal conviction. How about the policies Sergeant Brennan was alleged to not follow? Those were implemented in 2018, however, all of the alleged violations happened prior to that. Next slide, please. So I want to just take this in for a moment. No police officer has ever been fired from Hopkinton's Police Department for a policy violation, ever, not in the 126-year history. This is wholly without precedent, and almost everything you need to know. Next slide, please. So what really went wrong? The town should have presented Sergeant Brennan with something that would have made him not want a public hearing. You've heard this from the Select Board members that are running, or candidates that are running for Select Board, they've all said that. The reality is that that did happen. I first heard this mentioned on the Hop Take Podcast on February 10th of 2024. You might have heard it, too. This might be some breaking news for most of you, since it's never been fully reported, but it's a fact, and none of the Select Board here is going to deny it because they all know it's true. There was a deal on the table. That meeting to negotiate the deal happened on November 1st of 2023. Sergeant Brennan, his attorney, Chief Bennett, the town's attorney, our former town manager, for some reason, the Kroll investigator was there, they were all there. They had all agreed to an eight-day suspension, a mutually agreed-upon press release stating Brennan had the full support of the chief in the town, and that Brennan would return to his same position as sergeant. The town's attorney took this deal back to the Select Board in an executive session, and one of them said no. The only thing I don't know is who spoke on behalf of the board to say, we're not going to accept that. I mean, we could ask them, but it clearly wasn't Mariel. This is all true, correct, authenticated by multiple people. It was held at the DPW, I know all about it. So where does Brennan go from there when they say, we're not going to take that? Well, then he has the option to plead his case in an executive session or in a public hearing. He chose the public hearing. Many people have asked, I wonder why he chose that, so I asked him. He chose to have a public hearing because of the harm this has caused to him and his family. He knew the residents of our town, his town, would never hear the full story if they didn't hear, if they held this in executive session. He knew that significant information had been redacted from his interview with the Kroll investigator, and every news article, and had a headline that made it seem he was connected to the rape of a child, which absolutely was not true. Next slide, please. As a result of the public hearing, and how people perceived what was happening to Sergeant Brennan, more residents got involved and started paying attention to town government, and a petition began to recall the Select Board. More than 3,000 signatures have been collected. I'm sure many of you in this room have signed it, thank you. We are still going strong. One fact you might find interesting or surprising is that while I was signing the recall on Saturday, February 10th, I also met Tim Brennan for the first time. Following the chaos of those hearings, 37 residents came forward to speak, many of them experts in certain areas of their field. Again, the Select Board chose not to follow. Again, the Select Board chose not to follow any of the, any of the information that was given by law enforcement officers, internal affairs, lawyers, prosecutors, state police detectives. All of them informed the board that Brennan should have not been terminated, will win an arbitration, and if he is terminated, he would not get his job back. They heard from our town's sexual assault and rape survivors. That actually made me the saddest. That had they already accepted the, the terms that were there that they, that they brought to them in November, none of that would have happened. We wouldn't be in this financial situation we're in. So this vote, last slide, please. Last slide. Thank you. This vote is about getting a man who has served his town faithfully back on the street. Hopkinton does not have enough police officers right now. We're still understaffed. That's widely known. We're also understaffed at leadership levels. So I ask you to vote yes to reinstate Tim Brennan because no matter what any of our personal opinions are about how this should have, could have, would have been handled. Brennan was charged with violating policies that weren't even in place. And policy violations have never resulted in termination. I ask you to vote yes to help limit our financial liability because our Select Board acted so improperly. They've opened its lap to civil lawsuit that is most definitely coming from the victim. Lastly, vote yes because this is a symbolic vote. We elect our Select Board to follow our will. It's just that simple.
Thank you.
That's represented government and that's just how it works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No clapping, no clapping. Please stop clapping. Megan. So if there is additional clapping, we are gonna, we may have to take a break. And we also may have to ask people to step out of the room if you're clapping. We may not have clapping in the hall. Go ahead.
Timothy Boyven, 41 Pine Crest Village. I'm a friend of the survivor who made the allegations that resulted in the deputy chief being indicted on three counts of child rape. By firing Sergeant Brennan, this board has re-traumatized this woman constantly over and over and over again. You have re-traumatized her. You should know better. There's a lot of people who should be...
Please direct your comments through me, please.
There's a lot of people who should be responsible here. The fact that Sergeant Brennan tried to guide this woman properly. The fact that the Middlesex District Attorney said they had no problem with how he dealt with it. The fact that after the Louder Mill hearing, at the authorization of the police chief, the personal identifying information of the woman who came forward and her young children was released to the public. And then you fire him? I'm sorry. This is morally reprehensible. It's morally reprehensible and the town should be ashamed. Please reinstate Tim Brennan immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your final is for 211 Winter Street. I believe that the presentation had some inaccuracies. And through you, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask the Town Council to provide some clarity on that.
Okay, is there a specific thing that you want to ask the Town Council to clarify?
Yes. So the assertion that Tim Brennan never knew of a sexual assault on a minor? Also, the timeline of the, I don't know how the presenter had information on the negotiations, but if Town Council could also provide some clarity on that as far as what was offered and when.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is for Town Council. I, I didn't, I'm sorry. Was there a part that was directed for you and a part directed for Town Council? I thought it was all Town Council.
It was all Town Council.
Pardon me, it was all for about, sorry. So he did clarify that he wants Town Council to answer. Okay. Yes. So this is Town Council. Can you introduce yourself?
Sure. Brian Bertram. I represent, I work for the law firm Harrington Heap. We serve as Town Council in Hopkinton. I'll start with the, the second part first. Settlement negotiations, if they occurred, occurred in either executive session, which as a municipal employee under the state ethics law, I can't discuss unless those minutes are released. And just as a more general matter, settlement discussions amongst council by rule are confidential, so I can't address those either. I'm a little disappointed, frankly. They've gotten into the public. They should not have been released. As to the timeline, I, I think the, what I can present to you is, is that the town, when it first learned about this, retained an independent investigator. That's fairly routine in these kind of matters. We want to have an investigator who doesn't have a connection to the town or to the police department look into the matter. That investigative firm was Kroll. I think the specific issue that we're referring to is what Sergeant Brennan knew and when. You know, Kroll found that at least by 2017, Sergeant Brenner had, Brennan had met with the survivor and he had learned of facts that at least informed them that an indecent assault and battery on a minor had occurred. And that would have been in 2017, prior to Jay Porter's promotion to deputy police chief and prior to the reporting to the Middlesex District Attorney's Office. Again, those are the facts that were presented by Kroll to the town, relied upon by the Select Board. For anybody who's interested in the factual presentations that were made in the Louder Mill hearing, it was done in open session. I believe that our public access TV, they did broadcast it. I suspect that they recorded it. And anybody who wants to view all of the evidence that was presented in that hearing can do so by going online.
Go ahead.
My name is Paula Garland, 50...
I think you, you might want to tip that mic up toward you and, I'm sorry, I think you have to go very close to it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. You want to try again?
That's good. Paula Garland, 50...
Can everyone hear? Sorry, just checking.
Paula Garland, 50 Downey Street. Through the moderator. What I would like to ask the Select Board is, due to the overwhelming support from the town, us, I would like to ask that the Select Board impose a more reasonable discipline than the, so that we, the residents of Hopkinton, won't be exposed to as much liability. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail, Gail Ober, 17 Fawn Ridge Road. Karen, first of all, thank you for the deep dive that you've done. On February 8th, due to a poorly performing chief and a poorly performing Select Board minus Muriel Kramer, this town lost the best police sergeant they ever had. Tim Brennan set the bar high for the Hopkinton Police Department. He worked tirelessly to protect the town of Hopkinton. I've also never seen a person take the time, as Tim has, to really get to know so many people in this town. He is the most kind-hearted and personable human being, one of the most that I have ever met. And his family is incredible. Knowing that Tim was on the Hopkinton Police Force allowed me and my family to sleep well at night. Tim brought the RAD program into our town and into our high school. This program has helped so many women and students learn not to be afraid, how to defend themselves and not to be victimized. And I am one of them. And my daughter will be one next year at Hopkinton High School. There is so much wrong with the decision to fire Tim Brennan. Now this town has a chance to ask the Select Board to right their wrong. It's never too late to do the right thing. I hope you will all join me in voting to reinstate Tim Brennan to the Hopkinton Police Force.
Thank you.
Kelly DePaulo, 6 Hoyt Way. I support this article wholeheartedly. Sorry, I'm shorter. Can someone help adjust this for me?
I think you tipped the whole thing.
Yeah. Thank you. That's better. Thanks, John. Kelly DePaulo, 6 Hoyt Way. I support this article wholeheartedly. Our consideration of this article is, in fact, very appropriate. Everything on tonight's agenda was vetted by Town Council and our town clerk, so thank you to them for all of their hard work. And while the town clerk and the Town Council know what regulation made it possible for this article to be on tonight's warrant, I don't think many residents truly know about it. So I'm just going to read it to you as a little point of edification for anyone like me who is very curious about this. Section 12 in the Select Board's Rule of Procedure, which this section is entitled "Reconsideration of Votes", states the following regarding the Select Board's ability to reconsider its earlier votes. Quote, "The Board may reconsider any vote taken at a prior meeting without limitations as to time. A motion for reconsideration so require a majority of the Board's members in attendance at the meeting at which a motion for reconsideration is offered." So there you have it. Let's have them reconsider their vote. Let's see if, after all that has come to light, things that they should have known and should have looked into before, and I highlight "before" their February vote, let's see if they will swallow their pride and actually take this opportunity, this gift, and I repeat this, this gift that we are giving them. We have given them a time to fix what they wrongfully and perhaps illegally did. So that we can, so that we, as townspeople, later don't have the same extreme level of liability for their earlier mistaken decision to fire Sergeant Brennan. Please vote yes with me on this very important agenda item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I'd like to remind people as I speak, please speak through me and direct your vision and look at me as you're speaking, whatever you're talking about. You may go.
Hello, Amy Thomas, 215 Pond Street. Do I say like through the moderator?
If you have a question, yes.
Okay, no, I just have a statement.
Okay.
Okay. Tim Brennan built an amazing rapport with the community, especially the kids, on duty and off duty. It seemed to me that he was at every community event and always Friday Night Lights. Brennan took a genuine interest in the community he lives in and it is important that our kids have someone that they can trust. I want to make it clear that I do not know the Brennan socially. I know him mostly from seeing him at Starbucks and around town. Brennan has always been polite, kind, and genuinely interested in how my kids are and were doing. What I also know is that Tim Brennan was truly an amazing member in this town. The kind of town I'm proud to live in, which community policing is still practiced. This is especially important as our children grow older, start driving and taking on additional responsibilities. Everyone needs an officer they can trust and Tim was just that. Our town leaders made an example out of Tim Brennan and I still don't know the reason. In Hopkinton, no police officer has ever been fired for a policy violation. From my perspective, he was unfortunately caught up in the Porter scandal. I would take an officer that puts protecting me and my family first and I hope you all feel the same. Please vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. You might want to tip it up a tiny bit. There you go. Whoop. Okay.
Rachel Klein, 36 Glen Road.
Can people hear her?
Rachel Klein, 36 Glen Road. Can you hear me now? I want to preface my comments by saying that prior to moving to Hopkinton, I spent a number of years prosecuting both domestic violence and sexual assault cases, including crimes against children. So these issues are things that are very, very close to my heart. But they're not really what this article is about tonight. The way I see it, it's about two things. Whether departmental regulations are open to interpretation by individual officers and whether the group gathered here tonight should have the authority to direct personnel matters. Although I've not had the pleasure of meeting Tim Brennan, I have no doubt, based on everything I've heard about him, that he is a very good man. And I know how sensitive any sexual assault case is, my heart goes out to the young woman involved. But reporting policies exist in law enforcement, not just to protect individual community members. They exist to protect communities as a whole and to protect the functioning of departments. And when we allow individual law enforcement officers to deviate from these highest standards, we risk undermining both community safety and the rule of law. The second idea here, I'm troubled by the idea that we, as a group of people who are sitting here in this room after listening to an eight-minute presentation, think that we have all of the information the Select Board had when they made this decision. We haven't been able to evaluate everything that they did. The emotions of the town should not be what dictates personnel decisions. It's not a precedent we should set. These are my concerns. I'm voting no on this article tonight. I urge you to vote no as well.
Thank you. Yes.
Sabine St. Pierre, 1 Woody Island. So interestingly, I was actually going to talk about the policy violation piece of this. I was at the Louder Mill hearing and the piece that alarmed me the most was when they were talking about the policy that he violated and were talking about how we need stricter policies and how our police officers should be required to, if any one woman, man comes to them with something like this, that they are, they have to report it immediately regardless of the, the person's preference. No one's going to ever come forward. As a female, if I feel like I'm going to confide in somebody and I'm not ready to come forward and I'm not ready to face this music, that's my right as a human being. And if you're going to make stricter policies that are going to force officers to have to report things like this, no woman is ever going to come forward. No officer is going to want to work in this town because they're going to get fired. So just think about that. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis Road. I'll hunch it's cool.
Okay.
Through the moderator, I have kind of a question of pedantry. I'm going to steer clear of opinion on this one. If the town votes yes tonight, are we as a town actually empowered to force the Select Board to take an action? Question one. Question two, are they actually forced to reconsider it? And then I promise this is question three, are they actually forced to change their opinion?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask our Town Council to answer those three questions.
So the answer to all three questions is no. Town meeting cannot bind the Select Board to any actions. I think that that was fairly presented in the, the opening statement. You know, we have a, a tradition here in Hopkinton where sometimes we have articles on the warrant. I think the Upper Trails Committee was one in the last annual town meeting cycle where you can't force, you know, town meeting can't force the executive branch to do anything, but we discuss it anyway. So a vote here tonight would be entirely symbolic, but you can discuss it.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Ben Churko, 147 Lumber Street. I put together a little letter, but I'm not really going to read it. I think everyone knows what the pulse of this room is. There's maybe four people and the young attorney over there who are against Tim. Everybody else is in favor of Tim. And I know we elected the Select Board, but why should they have the final decision as to what happens? There's 300 people in the town of Hopkinton who care about what happens to them and they're all here right now.
Thank you. I don't know if people can hear. No. No. Can you go to this one, this side?
Now?
Yes.
To the last comment.
Introduce yourself again.
Eric Klein, 36 Glen Road. To the last comment, this isn't about being for or against Tim. It's about being for or against the rules that we have and whether they're followed. My comment is to the Select Board. I believe you all spent a lot of time on this.
Can you please direct your comments through me to them?
Sure.
Thank you.
To the Select Board. Through the moderator. You all spent a lot of time on this. You brought your best judgment to it. If you think you made the right decision, stick with it. People would respect you for it.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, Mike Shepherd.
Can people hear?
11 Hill Street. I'm speaking as a former selectman.
Okay, I just want to make sure people can hear you because I'm having a time.
Can everybody hear me?
Now we can.
All right, I'm speaking as a former selectman. All right, I'm speaking as a former selectman. And during my term, it was only one term, it was three years, and I found that you very seldom got an opportunity to do the right thing. Everybody usually determine what you did, whether it be legacy farms or whatever, oh, it's all wrong, it's going to ruin the town. But I can say, at least from my personal opinion, the selectman did the wrong thing here. They had multiple opportunities to make it right. I think we know all the information from Crow report, from the travesty that happened down there at the senior center in February, and standing out in front of town hall when they finally decided to fire Tim. I, you know, they absolutely did the wrong thing. I stand in support of this article, again, as a former selectman, because you're supposed to do the right thing, because you actually represent us. We voted for you. Now, two words about Tim Brennan. I know Tim really well. I know his wife. I've met his kids. His three kids are all Eagle Scouts. His eldest son is now in the Marine Corps, he's going to be graduated from Quantico at the end of next week as lieutenant. This is like a solid family, a solid American family. And to put him and his family through this is the ultimate travesty. I would be proud, and I'm probably old enough, to call Tim Brennan my son. He's always done the right thing, and every town meeting I've been to for at least the 10 years, he's standing at the back of the room, making sure everything goes right. So, I would hope that we vote yes, and I would hope the selectman would reconsider and try to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Madam Moderator, I'm Amy Groves, 2 College Street. I just want to speak to one very narrow piece of this because I want to speak from my own experience. I was born in 1960 in Indiana, and when I was starting, about the time I was 12 years old, I began to be raped repeatedly. I was raped repeatedly by an older adult family member. And I don't presume to tell another rape survivor what her experience was or how she should feel about it, because everybody is different. But in my case, my life would have been immeasurably better, it would have been changed forever, if somebody had come forward and spoken on my behalf, if we had had mandatory reporting laws, and if my family members hadn't turned the other, turned their eyes away, if the doctors hadn't looked down at the floor in embarrassment and said nothing, my life would have been different. So while I don't pretend that I know what somebody else's life is like, I want to urge people to please not assume that rape survivors always want their stories to be kept secret and that children can handle this kind of thing. We need champions, we need adults to be adults. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike O'Reilly, 201 West Main Street. I've known Tim for about 15 years now through scouting. A couple of things really bothered me about the Select Board hearing. I thought, because I did read the facts, and I thought they kind of spoke for themselves, and maybe there was a policy violation, and maybe there was an opportunity to have some negotiation of an eight-day suspension. But you also fired a person who had a spotless record. You fired someone and then took away their pension. Think about that yourselves. If you lost your job and you lost 30 years of your pension because of a policy violation, you might be sanctioned, you might be punished for it, you might be whatever, but the strength of the punishment did not fit the policy violation on a spotless 30-year record. That's where I think the Select Board really, really got it wrong. And I also think about the retribution that took place because it was Tim that brought forward the letter of no confidence about the chief. And boom, they knew about this for several months, but he didn't get suspended until a few weeks after he brought forward that letter, which sounds like retribution, which sounds like we're going to have to dig deeper in our pockets to pay for the retribution that Tim faced for doing a letter of no confidence to the chief. This is symbolic, and I understand that, but this is one of the gentlemen that I've, he vetted me. When I became, when we became friends, he vetted me. He wanted to know all about me before our sons hung out together. He wanted, he asked a thousand questions about me and my wife. He was just, he's always asking questions. He knows everybody. He is the, I call him the George Bailey, because if you've followed some of the things that happened since this has happened, this town is, I've never seen a town rise up for one person.
Thank you.
Think about looking in the mirror, and would they rise up the same way for you?
Thank you.
Amy?
Yes.
Okay, Beth Lloyd, 190 Lumber Street. There's a lot of people saying "we, we want this, we want this." Well, there's a lot of "we" in the town that aren't here tonight that agree with the Select Board, that agree with our police chief, okay?
Can you please hold the mic up so people can hear you?
So, I read in, on Boston, on the MassGov, that being a mandated reporter started in the state of Massachusetts in 1962. Can somebody tell me why the police didn't know about it until 2018? Through the moderator.
Thank you. That's not for you to answer. I just want to have, it's being a mandatory reporter.
Right. She says mandatory reporter. When did it happen in Hopkinton?
It was in 1962, but it didn't come to hopkinton until 1987.
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Well, I keep hearing 2018 thrown around. I've been a mandated reporter in two different states for much longer than that, and I'm not a police officer, I just work with kids. I'm just going to say how I feel, and a lot of people in town do feel this way, okay? Good men make bad mistakes, and sometimes when they make big errors, they pay for them in the worst way. People make mistakes. He made a mistake. He should have, he should have reported it, and this, none of this would have been happening. That's what I have to say, and I support you.
Thank you. Yes.
Peter Thomas, 215 Pond Street, through the moderator. I would like to correct something our elected constable just said, which is that she implied because he, as a police officer, is a mandated reporter, that this crime happened, and that he had knowledge of this crime, sorry, when the victim/survivor was a child. That is, in fact, false. I want to say also, through the moderator, everyone in this room, Ms. Groves, their heart broke a little when they heard your personal story. We commend your courage for sharing that. However, your experience is not comparable to the survivor's experience, who was 28 years old when Mr. Brennan knew of the crime, alleged crime. So I want to be very clear, she was not a minor when he knew. Therefore, mandated reporter statutes do not apply to a crime that didn't involve a minor. She was an adult, fully of sound mind and body, fully aware of the consequences of disclosure. She has the right to own her story. No policy, no board, no police officer, no law should be able to tell you, as a woman, a victim, that you don't get to own your own story. And if that's how our town is going to be, I think we ought to be honest about that. Because I don't think that's in the spirit of this town, and I think everyone on that Select Board feels the same way.
Can you please look at me as you're speaking?
I think everyone on the Select Board feels that same way in the heart, in their heart. If it were them, they would want to own their own story. Thank you.
Please do not clap.
Karen Crumb, 12 Joseph Road. I don't take this lightly. I know everyone here is family, friends, neighbors. I have no issue with the police department. I mean, I just, I don't take this lightly. It's not really about whether Tim Brennan is a great guy, it's about the fact that you don't get fired for a policy violation, and the fact that she was not a minor. He did not know that a minor had been sexually assaulted. He found out when she was an adult that she had been sexually assaulted years prior. That is the truth. We can direct the Select Board. We can't force them to do anything. That's why this is a symbolic vote. But this is about like reasserting our authority in this town. We decide. That's why we're asked to spend money, that's why we're all sitting here. You know, we come from five precincts, we vote. I'm asking you to vote yes on this article to direct the Select Board and take back our authority in this town. It's, this is our town, and we elect, they're not volunteers, we elect this position. Yes, it's not paid. We are asking, and I am asking you to vote yes on this, because we need our Select Board to know that they're not smarter than us, but that we have really smart people in this town that can offer advice almost for free, and then they can take that. But that didn't matter, and it should have mattered. And no one has been fired for a policy violation in the history of the police department. It's as simple as that. So all I'm asking you is to vote yes to direct the Select Board to reinstate them. That is it.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi. My name is Sue Currys, I live at 29 Forest Lane. I'm a little confused, and I hope I'm not asking a question that everybody here already knows the answer to. But my understanding was that discussions about personnel and performance are usually held in executive session through you, Madam Moderator. Could town council please explain, do we really have all of the information here, or were there discussions and negotiations that happened in executive session that, for reasons of ethics and law, we haven't, we don't know what really went on?
Okay, thank you.
Through the moderator. So there were two Louder Mill hearing dates in this case. The first one was in open session. The Select Board, we typically do personnel matters in executive session. The request was to do it in executive session. Sergeant Brennan has a right, under the open meeting law, to request that such a hearing be in open session. He made that request, and the town honored it. So, the first hearing where the evidence and the exhibits was presented was in open session. So in terms of the evidence and exhibits, minus redactions or things that maybe have been withheld from exhibits, you know, that is available to the public, and that is what the Select Board relied upon. They could not rely upon, and they did not rely upon, anything that was outside of the Louder Mill hearing in terms of the discipline. In terms of other discussions that may have gone on, again, if those occurred, they would have been in executive session, or they would have been amongst council, and for those reasons, I can't disclose them.
Thank you. Is there any other statements or questions?
Peter Thomas, 250, sorry, Madam Moderator, may I?
Yes.
Peter Thomas, 215 Pond Street. This is a question through the moderator to town council. Council, the labor attorney representing the town at the Louder Mill hearing was Merrick O'Connell. You are with Harrington Heap, a different firm. Do you, as a licensed attorney, agree with town, the labor attorney, Merrick O'Connell, that all five policy violations that they charged Sergeant Brennan with in the Louder Mill hearing were actually policies in effect at the time? I'm not going to comment on that because we have an arbitration that's pending.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions or statements? Okay. Seeing that there are none, we are going to vote. What does it say in terms of, I don't know the vote needed. Okay, so we're going to do this vote electronically. It will, if it passes by a simple majority, that's what's needed, a simple majority. Nicole, let me know when we're ready. Okay, we're going to open the vote for about 30 seconds. Okay, it looks like the voting has slowed down quite a bit. If you've not yet voted, please take a moment to make your choice on your clicker. Before we put the, before we put the tally up, I just do want to remind folks that the rules of the hall, according to town meeting time, these are not my rules or anyone up here's rules, that we are not supposed to clap or otherwise respond. I know that's very difficult, and this has been quite, quite a challenging article and quite a challenging time for everybody, but let's respect each other and our neighbors and Mr. Brennan. Okay, can you please close the vote? Thank you. There are 220 yes to 99 no. The article passes. Thank you. We are moving on to the, sorry, oh. Does someone need to make a motion? The Select Board, please, can you make a motion, please, to dissolve the special town meeting?
Madam Moderator, I move to dissolve the special town meeting.
All in favor of dissolving the special town meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the special town meeting has been dissolved. We are moving on to the regular town meeting, and we are moving to Article 23. Just, just as a reminder, we do not, we are not going to take any formal breaks, but anyone may step out for a few minutes and come back. Because you've got the clicker, you'll be able to vote, and we'll start with Article Is there a motion?
Yes, there is. Article 23, townwide water main flushing program. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Capitol recommends approval.
Okay, this is $100,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings, and this is for a townwide water main flushing program. Essentially, this is a 10-year program to flush and try to keep our town waters clean.
Those are some pretty powerful pictures, I would say. Is there any, is there any discussion, any questions? I think, Carrie, Carrie's available if there are questions. Do you want?
Through the moderator to the DPW Director.
Yes. Do you want to come up, Carrie? Thanks. Yeah, you can, you can start your question.
Madam Moderator, thank you. So, Ms. Reed, is there a plan to measure the amount of water coming out in the flushing program? Like, do we have hydrant measures to know how much is coming out when we flush them?
Through the moderator, we do not have meters on the hydrants.
Madam Moderator, my concern is that the average amount of water that we, as a town, lose every year is 20%. 20% of the water, that would be enough to fill 118 Olympic-sized swimming pools in a year. We lose a lot of water. And my issue with doing a hydrant flushing program where we're not measuring the amount that's coming out is that we don't know how much is coming out. So it continues to add to the amount of water that we lose. The reason this matters is because shortly, we're going to be going to the MWRA to ask to connect to the MWRA, the Water Resources Council, to connect to the MWRA, and their guideline is 10%, 10% UAW, unaccounted-for water. We are at 20%, and they probably will not approve our permit. So we need to do everything we can to bring that down, and so I'd like to hear a plan from DPW about how we're going to at least account for the water that we're flushing out of our hydrants. Because, so that, that's my question in my statement. Thank you.
Okay, so it's, it's related, I think, to this, this article? So, I'm allowing that. I just want to remind people, we want to try to stay within the four corners of the article as it's written. Go ahead.
John Cardillo, 84 Winter. This is.
This is through the moderator to the Appropriations Committee. Where's the $100,000 coming from, and what are the tax implications for me?
So this is the retained earnings from the Water Enterprise Fund. So essentially, what that is, that your water rate, you know, the retained earnings, your water rates, you pay your water bill, that goes into that fund. So essentially, your, the rates are determined based on to keep the fund from going to zero or whatever. So this is essentially, this will impact water rates to fund this.
Thank you.
Kyle Smith, 25 Amherst. Is this for the DPW to execute or a third-party vendor?
Go ahead.
Through the moderator. So this funding will help us with engineering support for the program, and then we plan to use DPW staff and equipment to actually implement the plan.
So the $100,000 is for engineering?
Mostly for consulting support. We also may hire some consulting contractor support to do this, depending on how much personnel and equipment we need.
Thank you. Yes?
Ed Harrow, 8 Spring Lane.
Can people hear Ed?
Ed Harrow, 8 Spring Lane. Get a handle on the mic. So my question is, the dirty water, a universal well problem, or is it significantly with just one?
So the dirty water program, the problem that we're facing is more to do with sedimentation within the pipes, and it is coming, you know, we have high iron and magnesiums in several of our wells that contribute to this. So it's several different things that are going to win. A flushing program is pretty standard practice across, you know, drinking, public drinking water supplies.
Thank you.
Seeing that there are no other questions, we need a simple majority on Article 23, the Townwide Water Main Flushing Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, there was a majority in the House, or in the Hall. Okay, we're moving on to Article 24, the Howe Street Water Treatment Plant Ozon Treatment. Is there a motion?
Yes, there is. Article 24, the Howe Street Water Treatment Plant Ozon Treatment. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The select board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Capital recommends approval.
Thank you.
Okay, essentially, this is the Howe Street Water Treatment Plant in Ashland. They're essentially doing, replace the ozone treatment system to improve water quality, and this is a $958,000 cost that will be used as a debt excluded debt. It's a 10-year borrowing at $18 per year. And to be clear, this is our portion of that cost with Ashland.
Before you go, did, Carrie, did you want to speak to this slide, or do you want to be reactive based on what people ask you?
Through the moderator, I was planning to be reactive. I think most of the pertinent information's up there.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead. You can go ahead.
Ken Weissman, 145 Ash Street. My question, Madam Moderator, is why is this article being paid for by general taxation through, as opposed to a water department expense?
So it's really just to sep, is it? It's a debt exclusion, but it will be paid through the water bill, but we're doing a prop, a debt exclusion on it?
Okay, yes, go ahead, sorry.
Stephen Popkas, 24 Cedar Street Extension. This is a tax amount, but I am making a presumption that some portion of this is going to be paid for through user fees, since those of us who have wells get no real benefit from this.
Do you want to speak to that?
Yes, that is correct, as I answered in the previous question. That is, people, the water rate payers will pay that debt.
Can I ask a follow-on question?
Yes.
Do you, can you tell me the percentages on that? I mean, if it's a $2 million expansion, and those of us in the town are paying for a million of it, and the usage fees are paying for the other million, those are the numbers I just pulled out of the air.
It'll be $18 impact per year?
That's not the question I asked.
Sorry, can you please ask through me?
I'm asking how much of the, of the total project cost is being paid for by user fees?
By user fee versus the ballot initiative? Okay.
Exactly.
So let's, let's ask if they have that.
Are you asking how many people are on town water?
No, no, I'm asking, this project's gonna cost, may I respond?
Yeah, everything, it should come through me.
I am trying.
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
The project takes an amount of money, X.
Yep.
This pays some portion of X. Maybe it pays all of it, maybe it pays half of it. I don't know. The remainder of X, I would expect to come from user fees. I'm asking what that percentage is, or if there's any percentage at all.
From the town's borrowing, through the moderator, town's borrowing, it's all through the user fees of the water user who pay, it's people who are on town water will pay 100% of this cost.
So.
May I respond to that? Because that's, I don't believe he's answering my question correctly, because I'm paying taxes, so that cannot possibly be true. I don't pay a usage fee. I have a well.
So I think what you're asking is, is what's on the ballot, is the approximately $1 million that we would all share paying?
Right. I don't have a part.
Right, and then, are you asking, is there incremental costs that the user pays?
Is there any additional cost beyond this?
Okay.
For the project?
Okay.
Is this the entirety of the project?
Okay. So.
This is Hopkin's share of the project, to be paid by the water rate, the water users of town water.
Okay.
Not, not private wells, those who are on town water pay this.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mary Arnett, 51 Teresa Road. I'm not against the article, I just want to point a clarification. Does Ashland assess us for the amount based on our water usage and the percent of the total cost of the project? Or, in other words, how did we come up with the $958,000?
So if you look on the side, I brought it, we have an intermunicipal agreement with Ashland, which requires the town of Hopkin, once we agree into a capital project, to pay our portion of it based on the maximum allotted capacity, so it's approximately 20% of the total capital fees. So this project is about a $5 million project, and this $958,000 is the portion that would be Hopkin's share.
Okay. Madam Moderator, if I may ask a follow-up, real quick. So was Ashland that basically said, out of the total cost, we think you, you use 20% for the capacity, so we're going to ask you to pay $958,000?
I, I think, I think that's what you just said, right? Right, Carrie, that we pay 20%?
That's essentially, you know, it's an oversimplified version, but yes, that is how it works.
Okay, I'm sorry, Madam Moderator, that wasn't my question. I'm not speaking very well this evening, but I just wanted to know, is there a way that we validated how much capacity we use, and that, in fact, this is our fair share? That's my question.
Okay. It sounds like that's a yes or no question.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis, speaking as capital. Folks, we went at them on this one. We asked some really hard questions about whether or not we needed to do this work based on the upcoming MWRA linkage. It was pretty feisty on this one, actually. We wanted to know, was this required? Do I really need to throw, and I believe my exact phrase was, good money after bad? Why are we supporting this, and why are we supporting Ashland when we know this is not part of our long-term plan? We really went hard on this one to understand whether it was required, and the response from Carrie and DPW was wildly clear. MWRA is not happening today, it's not happening tomorrow, and it's not happening next week. It's going to be many years if and when that does happen. In the interim, we are obligated to maintain our fiscal responsibilities and our partnerships with the municipalities around us who supply water to us. Failure to support this will have an adverse impact on the overall availability, cost, and water quality in town, as articulated to capital in our discussion. I didn't want to spend $1 million on water. It felt like good money after bad, and frankly, it still does. But I'd like to shower, and I tend to take a while in there. I like it when it's hot, and I like it when I don't have to worry about whether the faucet's actually gonna turn on. Sometimes we are bound by the conditions we are in. This is a tough place in time. Let's make sure we keep the faucets running, yeah?
Thank you. Yes?
Madam Moderator, my name's Brian Johnson. I live at 20 Burke Dale Lane. This is a bit of a follow-on that the previous commenter may have partially answered, but my question is, given that we have this agreement with Ashland, what happens if this does not pass?
Oh, that's a good question. What happens if this does not pass, Carrie?
Through the, I imagine if this would not pass, we'd be in violation of our agreement with Ashland, but I also imagine they'd have a tough decision about how to move forward and whether they can, you know, progress with the project that they need for the plant, and it would definitely impact our water quality that we receive.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, Wendy Zimmerman, 24 Cedar Street Extension. Back to the funding of this, reading this article, the money is coming from the general fund, not from the user fees. If it's intended to come from the user fees, I think that should be stated explicitly in the article.
Thank you. So are you asking, basically, whether the article is written, is correct as written?
Yes, I am.
Okay, let me, let me ask the team.
The intent is that it is to be paid by the water rate, use, the water rate payers. So maybe Legal can chime in if it's worded correctly for that use?
Yeah, the article is worded correctly to take out the debt. It's been reviewed by bond counsel, and, you know, we're putting the full faith and credit of the town behind the bond in order to get the best rate. The monies that we appropriate in the future to pay, we can take from any source, you know. The bond will go on for many years after this, and each year, we will have to appropriate monies from some source to do that. I hope that answers the question.
That answers the question. It's going to come out of the general fund, is what you just said.
No.
He said we can pick a source.
Right. So why don't we pick a source in the article? As it is, it's up to whoever's handling the money that day.
I'm not a bond lawyer. We have separate bond counsel who specializes in that. My understanding is, is that if we start to restrict the sources of funds in the bond offering that may be available, we may get a worse interest rate, because we're not backing it with the full faith and credit of the town. And to that point, these articles, any articles on borrowing, are run by the experts who will be doing the bond off, offering. I am very hesitant to amend those on town meeting floor, because we don't have them here. We don't want to have an adverse consequence. Again, you know, in the future, the monies that we use to pay for the bond, we can do. I think that, you know, town meeting can make its intentions known on that. I'm just very hesitant to start tinkering with motions when it comes to debt.
I understand your point. I hope you understand mine, that there is no record here of the town meeting's intent. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Ken Weissman, 145 Ash Street. I guess I kind of agree with the last lady, but I understand what Town Council is saying. But quite frankly, we've had this discussion many, many times over the years I've been here, and we've always put in something that said that this would be funded by, I'll say, the water rate users, and make it very clear that that's that. And we've done that many times. In fact, several times, I had to make the amendment at this microphone to spell that out. I'll also admit, will, will inform you, as one of the members of the Water Resources Commission, which will have to approve the interbase and transfer to connect to the MWRA, the Water Resources Commission does not take kindly to using, other than users' fees, water expenses. The Water Resources Commission basically has set in a lot of their decisions that they really want the users to pay the full cost of the water. And this kind of goes on face, says that it's not. You know, it's picked up by the full force of the whole town. So it's just another step, hurdle that you might be putting yourself in by not clarifying that it should be paid for by the water users. But I guess if Town Council is that, I mean, we have to, I think I might have been one of the people, as a water commissioner, signed this agreement with, with Ashland many, many years ago. We have to take, and, you know, pay our capital costs for it. So I'm in support of this motion, but I really don't like the way it's worded.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
So we've had clarification that on the ballot question, when you, on May 20th, that it does specifically say that it's from the water. That's how it will be funded?
Is there a way for us to project what the ballot question will say some way? No? Okay, sorry. So the ballots, my understanding is the ballots have already been printed or gone to print, right?
Yeah, they're printed. People have them in their mailbox, some of them are turned.
Yeah, so the, so the ballot has already been printed, so I think it would be, it would be great if we could see what it said, but, yeah, sorry, go ahead. Yes?
For anyone interested in the language of the ballot question, you can find the specimen ballot on the town's website. They're also posted at Town Hall. So if you want to look at the language, it is available right on there.
Yeah, so, well, that's why I would like to get it and post it, but I just want to keep moving. Yes, go ahead.
Darlene Hayes, 1/3 Road.
Can you, can you tip that down?
Yeah, it's stuck. Darlene Hayes, 1/3 Road, through the moderator to appropriations. When this article was introduced, it said that it would increase taxes $18 per year, so I would assume that would be every household, not just the users, that I'm still in support of it, and we use clock of water, so we need to pay our part. But can you clarify the $18 per year added to our taxes? It's everybody then, isn't it?
Yeah. Go ahead. Yes?
So that number is for the general calculation, but knowing that 2/3 of the town is on public water, that you can kind of correlate it for that?
All right. I have a clarification that our council would like to make.
So in the few moments that we had here, we did pull the warrant, which has the ballot question. It's question seven, and I think to the point that we've discussing, the ballot question at the end reads, "It is the intent of the town that the debt service be paid in the first instance from the Water Enterprise Fund." So hopefully, that clarifies matters. That will be voted on by the town. If we wanted to amend the motion to include that text too, I suppose that we could, but at the end of the day, this won't go forward unless we have a positive vote at the ballot, and it includes that text.
Okay. Thank you. Yes?
Hi, Linda Chus, 11 School Street. I may have missed it, but what's the longevity of this ozone system? How many years is it projected to last? Because if we do move to NWAR water supply, we would have paid for the full cost of this, is what it sounds like, even if we might not use the full life of it.
So I believe these systems are generally designed for a 10- to 20-year. Ozone is very corrosive, and depending on the quality of the water that they're getting, so this one certainly didn't last as long as we were hoping it was. We're having some water quality issues at that, that site. issues at that, that site. The water quality's been decreasing. That's been going into the plant. But to answer your question, you're right. We, you know, we need to pay for this upfront to do the work, and the return on investment might not be as long as before we do our MWR connection. MWR.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Marlo Poll, 7 Price Street. Madam Moderator.
Can you tip your thing up so you can, we can all hear you?
Great conversation last night on the school system and the investment that the town makes in the school system to have us where we are and what we need to do to stay there. Very great presentations on where we are.
Can people hear?
Oh, all right.
You need to please tip the whole thing up.
Okay. Question? How good is Hopkinton's water? The concern about the quality of the water that we have has been increasing over time. And last night's presentation had great stats on where we stand compared with neighboring communities. And I'm curious to see if somebody could comment on where Hopkinton is with the quality of our water and the value of the investment that we need to make to improve that. Are we number two in the state?
Thank you. Thank you. Did you have any information about how our water quality stacks up?
I certainly don't have an impressive presentation like the schools department. We're also not asking for $50 million. But I do encourage y'all to read the water, annual water quality reports that are available on the town website, on the water and sewer website. Our water and sewer department and our manager does a great job of updating the information as best we can. So those are annual reports required by DEP. We also have several reports to the state, so we are in compliance with the state drinking water standards as of now. Some of the issues like the dewater, uh, the decolorization issues is more an aesthetic issue than a safety issue. The PFAS, which we've, um, we talk about a lot, is a, it's a safety issue. And if you're all aware, the EPA and the federal government just put out new regulations, which is going to require us to do even more, and we're proactively addressing a lot of that, which is great. But don't have comparisons to other towns, but I do encourage you to look at the water quality report. And actually, I think the next one is coming up pretty soon, and it does get delivered to your houses. So you get paper copy, there's digital copies, all kinds of information if you want to read it, write it up on it.
Okay, thank you. Well, seeing that there is no more questioning, this, we're talking about Article 24, the Howe Street Water Treatment Plant. The vote needed tonight is two-thirds majority, and let's go ahead and use our electronic voting for that. Okay, please open the vote again. Green is for yes, and red is for no. All right. So it looks like the voting is slowing down a bit. If you haven't voted yet and you want to, please do make sure to make your choice. Nicole, can you close the voting, please? Wait, no, no. Yep, we're going to close it. We're, okay. So, do you have that at home?
No, nothing. We're done.
Okay. I think the at-home voting has, has ended. So there's yes, 239, no, 42. So this passes. All right. Do you want me to do this one? Yeah. So I'm going to step away for a minute, and Connor will run this one.
Okay, folks, we're on to Article 25, Grove Street Water Tank Design. Do we have a motion, Mr. Manning?
Yes, we do. Article 25, the Grove Street Water Tank Design. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The select board recommends approval.
Appropriation committee recommends approval.
Do we have capital?
You have to forgive me. I wasn't sure since we're not up there. Capital recommends approval.
Thank you.
Okay, essentially, this motion is for $250,000 to be paid by the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings. This is for the design of a Grove, the Grove Street Water Tank Design. This is the initial design analysis and what the need is for the town.
Okay, so hearing that, do we have any questions? On my left.
Alana Cassidy, 19 Eastview Road. I just have a question through the moderator for DPW. I had looked into this about five years ago, about possibly creating a mural or something very beautiful on the, on the old water tank. And I didn't know if these funds could include something like that, or if we, we could have a partnership to have it be not just a big blob.
So Alana, I think that for, if we're talking about like an art project for a mural or something, that's something we can probably figure out offline with the DPW director.
But is that, like, is that something that could be worked on through, like, is this with these funds? Because when I looked into it, I, it was...
So, so this is specifically towards the actual design of the tank when it comes to the engineering design? This is not really necessarily what it's going to look like?
All right. Well, think about that, too.
And again, keep it, like, definitely bring it up. I'm sure Carrie would be glad to hear your thoughts as well while she's going through it.
Thank you.
On my right.
Arrow Kramer, 39 North Street. This will, is to replace the older tank, yes?
Carrie?
So this is to get some engineering to support to figure out what to do with the old tank. So right now, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection is saying we need to have a plan and a potential design because the tank itself, if you all saw it when you parked here, you can note, you don't have to be an engineer to see that it, it needs some work. So we need the engineering support. At minimum, we are most likely, we're going to have to demolition, and we're going to have to use environmental abatement, and then we're going to use this funding to determine whether we need to replace it. If so, what that should look like, what size, dimensions, or if we do not need to replace it.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I have a follow-up question.
Uh, go ahead.
So my question really is about the abatement of the, the tank and whatever happens, and also the property around it. So I just wanted to, I know when the, the other tank went in, I was on the planning board, and we, we found out during the process that the property around it was contaminated, and we had asked for that to be addressed at the time the new one went in. And I'm wondering if remediation happened for the ground around the new tank, the newer tank, and if a total look at the remediation on that piece of property is part of it, especially if that has not happened?
Carrie, do we have information on this right now, or is this part of the, the plan that we're going to be looking at?
It's a little bit of both. I mean, it, my understanding is that whatever remediation needs to be done on the tank that was replaced most recently was done. I also understand that the fencing was put up for a little bit additional protection. I do know that the tank that we're talking about right here does have lead paint associated with it, and some concerns about that, which often gets in the soil in and around the tank. So that would be addressed as part of this plan. And then the, like, sediment within the tank would have to be tested and disposed of properly also.
Thank you very much.
Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis Road. Mr. Moderator, through you to the DPW head. For those of us who are significantly less familiar than you are, could you just briefly talk us through what it means to have a deficiency noted by the Mass DEP, and what happens if we choose to not adhere to their corrective action requirement?
Carrie, do you have an answer for that?
Well, like any regulatory agency, they do inspections, they have requirements, they kind of prep this along. Right now, we have gotten an approval for an extension to figure out the answer until next year, because I said we were coming before a town meeting to request this amount. Generally, what happens is that if you drag it along long enough, the regulators get fed up, and then they can issue an enforcement order, and they can tell us when things need to be done, what needs to be done, what timeline. So this gives us as a town a lot more ability to direct the actions of what we want to do.
Mr. Moderator, through you, just as a, I promise, super quick follow-up. Do those regulatory enforcement actions potentially include fines?
Yes.
So you're telling me it could cost us money to not do this?
Yes.
All right. Just wanted to make sure I was hearing you clearly.
Okay. On my left.
Thanks, Kyle Smith, 25 Amherst. Where'd the 250 number come from?
Carrie?
We have, and it might be in some of the backup information, a cost estimate based on, I think it was 2021, a recent cost estimate on construction costs. It had some engineering cost in it, and we backed into it 10%, which is standard kind of engineering cost, to get us through the next steps.
Okay, so to actually do the work, assume Ted X this?
Yes, to actually do the, the cost, and hasn't considered an inflation, replacement takes about $2.5 million project.
Okay, thank you. Awesome. Thank you. And now seeing we have no more questions, we're going to go to a vote. It's a simple majority, so we're just going to do a voice vote on this one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And I am going to declare that as unanimous, and so Carrie's. Now we're on to Article 26. Do we have a motion for Article 26?
Article 26, East Main Street Water Main Replacement. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The select board recommends approval.
Appropriation committee recommends approval.
Capital's getting their steps, but we recommend approval.
Okay, this is $400,000. This is a debt exclusion that will be paid for by the water rate users, and essentially, which will be a 10-year borrowing, possibly $8 per year. But that's for the rate payers, and it might be a little bit different, but that's the idea. But anyway, this is to replace the East Main Street Water Main, you know, Water Main. It is past its lifetime, and to keep the water clean, we, we are, we should be replacing it.
Thank you, Mike. On my left.
Peter Thomas, 21 Pond Street. Through the moderator to DPW Director Reed. Was there any consideration given to the sizing of this water main to accommodate the anticipated increase in volume once the connection to the MWRA is made? I know that you expect, the town expects to request about a million gallons more from the MWRA than we are currently pumping, and that our current infrastructure would not support that. So if we're going to go and replace a water main, I want to understand that this actually would accommodate what you are going to request from the MWRA.
Carrie, do you have an idea of that one right now?
I will try to answer that to the best of my ability. So this particular article is asking for the engineering support, so that would be part of the analysis. We plan based on our asset management plan, which is available also on our website for anybody who wants to do some good reading. You know, this was considered to be replaced in kind. This is, you know, East Main Street. We don't have a lot of projected growth in that area. It's pretty much built out, at least according to town strategic plan, so I don't anticipate, you know, a significant need, as opposed to other areas where the MWRA connection infrastructure would be needed. But this funding would help with the engineering analysis and to evaluate that. So it would definitely be considered as part of the process.
Just follow-up question. So to clarify, Director Reed, through the moderator, you don't anticipate, even in the event of connecting to the MWRA, that this infrastructure will need to be replaced? That, the, this will be appropriate because of the, the current build-out. It's already built out, and so we would never need to upgrade this to support the additional capacity that we would be requesting from the MWRA?
So Carrie, you can answer that. I think it just is, yes, that we're going to be, so from what she was saying...
We're not throwing it away, is my point.
Yeah, no. From what she's saying, we are in fact building out something in an area that is built out, so we're not looking at a huge increase of volume or change in volume from what we're at right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Ken Weisman, 145 Ash Street. Similar question to the one I answered or asked earlier about whether or not the intent of this is to pay for the water users, which I heard. I'd like to see, Mr. Moderator, what the vote, or the, uh, the, what we're going to vote on at, for this article. So to see the wording of that, and if it has that in it, I'm happy with it.
Would our IT team in the back be able to pull up the specimen ballot again? I believe that was, that was question eight on the...
It's question eight, and it has the same text, yes.
So we'll have it up just so you can see it, but to answer the question, yes, it does have the same language at the end. Okay, so now that we've seen that, I don't see any other questions, so we're going to go to a vote. This one is a two-thirds majority, so I'm going to go ahead and go for the clicker on this one. So if you can get that ready in the back. Okay, folks, we are opening the poll now. You can go ahead and vote. Okay, I think we're slowing down now. Just a couple more coming in. Get your votes in now. Okay, so we're going to close in three, two, one. Okay, and we have 235 to 34. That is a two-thirds in favor. It passes. And this time, I will now return the podium to our moderator, Ellen Rutter.
Thank you. Nice job. Thank you, Connor. Thank you. Are we on 27?
We are on 27, yeah.
Okay. We are on Article 27, the Water Department Vehicle Replacement. And is there a motion?
So Article 27, Water Department Vehicle Replacement, W1. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The select board recommends approval.
Appropriation committee recommends approval.
Vroom. Capital recommends approval.
Thank you.
So this is $70,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings for the purchase of a pickup truck to, that needs to be replaced.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any questions about vehicle, I think it's called W1? Are there any questions? Yes. Hi.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mary Arnot, 51 Teresa Road. So I'm just looking at all of the articles for the utility pickup trucks, and it looks like three of them, four of them. And they're all different prices, so are they used in a different way, Madam Moderator? Through you to Carrie?
Yes. A little more, a little more.
A little more than, um, they're different. They have different, you can see the pictures to show a little bit of different equipment. So all of them have different equipment on them. That pretty much drives the difference of cost.
Okay. Well, that's a very straightforward answer. Thank you. It just occurred to me that if we could save some money somehow by sharing the trucks to do different things, or, but I'm sure you've gone through all of it, so thank you. And, and just as a reminder, if anyone's looking ahead, which I think people might be, Article 28 was pulled yesterday, and no action in the consent agenda, so these slides and things were developed before that. So tonight, we're talking, we'll talk about Article 27 and Article, uh, let's see, 29 and 30, but we aren't talking about Article 28 that was pulled off. So, yeah, go ahead.
Kyle Smith, 25 Amherst. What specifically are the trucks?
Okay. Do you know exactly what the truck for Article 27 is?
Don't exactly know. I mean, the information's up here. Are you looking for makes and models?
Yeah, like, that looks like a 250 single cab with like a custom bed on it. And which one of these is $125,000?
So is your question that you want to know exactly what truck this is?
I want to know exactly what they are. Where are we, where are we getting 70, 95, and 125? and 125?
Truck W3 is a Ford utility pickup truck. It was purchased in 1212. Vehicle W3 is a Ford utility pickup truck. It's purchased in 2012. As you can see, it's got, what do I got on there? 102,000 miles. This one has a lot of equipment on it. We use it, you know, on a daily basis to do water operations, so a lot of the cost has to do with the equipment that's on there. And then W1, which is our second prior to Article 27, is a Dodge 2500. It was 2013. It's got 104,443 miles, and as noted, our mechanics have said that they do not think that these are going to pass inspection next time, for next year. So if we don't approve these at town meeting tonight, we will most likely have to replace them eventually and figure out another way to fund it.
Thank you.
Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis Road. Madam Moderator, to Carrie. Hi, Carrie. Quick question. I just really want to make sure, again, I'm hearing you correctly. Can you state that these vehicles have reached the end of their useful life from your perspective, or from the perspective of the experts that you retain?
Yes, so these are used for leisure life. We put up some information about the dates of the mileage to help folks understand that.
And just to confirm your response to the last petitioner, would there be a negative impact to your ability to provide services in town were we not to support this article?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Seeing there's no further discussion on Article 27, and the vote needed is a simple majority, let's try a voice vote. All in favor of Article 27, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, there's a clear majority, so Article 27 passes. Article 28, as we mentioned yesterday, was part of the consent agenda, and no action is being taken. Moving on to Article 29, the Water Department Vehicle Replacement. W3, is there a motion?
Article 29, Water Department Vehicle Replacement, W3. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Capital recommends approval.
So essentially, this is $95,000 for the purchase of a utility pickup truck, and this is 90, the source will be the Water Enterprise retaining, retained earnings.
Okay. So one thing I did want to mention is during the planning session for the town meeting, we talked about a vehicle, like an ongoing vehicle replacement plan, and also a disposal plan, so making sure that there's either using trucks for parts, or selling them, or all those things. So that, that is happening in the background, so I know that comes up quite often, so just be aware that the team does think about these things and is managing them. Are there any questions about Article 29? Okay. Again, this is a simple majority. I'll take a voice vote. Again, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, clear voice vote with the majority. This passes. Moving on to Article 30, the Sewer Department Vehicle Replacement. Is there a motion?
Article 30, Sewer Department Vehicle Replacement. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
Is there a Select Board recommendation?
The Select Board recommends approval.
Thank you.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Capital recommends approval.
Thank you.
So this is $85,000 to be paid from the Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings, and this is a replacement truck, as was shown in the pictures. Actually, that was water, but it's a replacement for a sewer department vehicle.
Okay, thanks. Are there, are there any questions about this truck? Okay, I think there's a slide. Did you want to say anything about it, Carrie? No? Okay. All right, let's move to a vote. It's again a simple majority. All in favor of the vehicle replacement for the Sewer Department, Article 30, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's a, it's a clear majority. Article 30 passes. Article 31, wastewater treatment plant membrane, is there a motion?
Yes, so Article 31, wastewater treatment plant membrane. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriations Committee recommends approval.
Capital recommends approval.
So this is 345,000 to be paid through the Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings, and this is a membrane for the sewer wastewater treatment plant, and is required for regulatory compliance.
Okay, I think there is, yep. So there is a slide. I know we talked about it being a sort of reactive. Carrie, did you have anything you wanted to say? You want to see if they're questioned?
I don't have anything other than questions available to answer, if anybody has it. Couldn't get any cool pictures of the actual membranes themselves.
Is there any, any questions or comments?
Paul Gallagher, 38, Glen Road. Through the moderator, the question is that this slide says that the membranes have reached their, the end of their design life. The other water treatment equipment slide said that the equipment in question had reached the end of its useful life. I guess my question is, are the membranes at the end of their useful life?
I think we can't know until they actually fail, but yes, they are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we're on a roll here. So this again would be a, a simple majority. All in favor of Article 31, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Clear majority, voice vote. Article 31 passes. Article 32, the Sewer System Evaluation, is there a motion?
Article 32, Sewer System Evaluation, Hayden Row Pump Station. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Capital recommends approval.
So this is 221,500 to be paid from the Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings, and this ensures adequate, this study ensures adequate capacity of system, supports new school and development.
Okay. Does anyone have, oh, I see. It looks like you got a question. Yes?
Yes. Dora Schmidt, 49 Franklin Road. If we don't have sewer on our street, do we pay for sewer? Do I still pay the sewer bill? Or is that by use?
This is for the sewer ratepayers.
Okay, well, we don't have sewer on our street, so do we pay for it even if we don't have it on our street?
No, it's just for people who pay the sewer bill.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other questions? Okay, seeing there are none, we'll go to a vote on Article 32. We need a simple majority, so we'll do a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, there's a clear majority, vote, voice vote. Article 32 passes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Carrie. That was a lot of good work there. Okay, moving on to Article 33, municipal parking. I think, I think the, the Select Board is making a motion?
Yes. We move the article as printed in the warrant and motions document. This is to... Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
This is to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase, lease, or eminent domain, a parcel of land consisting of 40,000 square feet, located at 10 Walcott Street, 14 Main Street, and 0 Main Street, for the purpose of providing municipal parking in the downtown area, on such terms as the Select Board shall deem to be in the best interest of the town. To transfer from certified free cash, the sum of $2,985,000, to fund said acquisition, including all legal, engineering, recording, and other related costs, and to authorize the Select Board to accept by gift the construction of a parking lot located at 10, at 6 Walcott Street, that is connected to the property located at 14 Main Street, for the purpose of providing municipal parking in the downtown area, on such terms as the Select Board shall deem in the best interest of the town.
Okay. So the Select Board...
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriations?
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Based on the straw poll of my two present members I just took, capital also recommends approval.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so this article is going to authorize the Board to acquire a parking lot for public use behind Town Hall, Bill's Pizza and Middlesex Savings Bank. The process would be that the town issues an RFP to acquire the parking lot in this location to provide more public parking downtown. Owners of the land in this area would respond to the RFP. The town would collaborate on the design with one, with the owner. Then the parking lot would go through the planning board permitting process, and the parking lot would then be constructed. The town acquires the lot, the completed project. The conceptual plan shows 189 total parking spaces after construction. The town would pay, like I said, $2,975,000, with an additional $10,000 included for legal, engineering, et cetera. No buildings will be demolished. So the current plan is conceptual?
Was there a slide? Was there one slide on this? What's that?
Yes, there is.
I think there is one slide on this. Okay, and this summarizes?
Yes, that, that summarizes it. This is just a conceptual plan. We're not quite there yet, and there is, there's a possibility that the, the access on Claflin Street would not, would not be required, would need, would need to have a retaining wall. But again, this is all just conceptual.
Okay. All right, I see there might be a few questions. I'll start here.
Through the moderator, I'd like to make a motion that we...
Could you please, sorry, can you please say your name and your address?
Jim Cirillo, 35 Wood Street.
Okay.
Make a motion that we separate item three from Article 33, as we did in 29, Town Meeting in 19, in 2019.
So please, can you, can you tip that mic up so people can hear you?
I would like to make a motion, or am making a motion, that item three of Article 33 be separated for discussion and voting, separate from the other article acquiring the three parcels.
Okay. Can, can they make a motion within this motion? Yeah. If he wants to separate three, he can make that motion. Okay, so when there's a motion made within a motion, I mean, we will discuss the motion that was just made within the motion. So to make sure I understand, you're, you're motioning to pull the, the third point out? Can we go, can we go back to the...
The third, the third item is related to 6 Walcott Street?
Yes.
And it's entirely different than the first two articles, the two items.
So this is the one that you're, this is what you're asking for?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, is it simple? Okay, so the first thing we'll do is all in, I'm going to ask people to vote whether we are going to con... Oh.
Should be just...
Okay, sorry. So first, we're going to discuss this, the idea of pulling this out, and then we'll vote on that, and then we'll go back to the whole article. So are there any questions, or does anyone want to talk about pulling number three out? And if you could approach the mic, if that's what you want to talk about first? Yes?
Kyle Smith, 25 Amherst. If you pulled up the conceptual again, I don't know if it is different. It looks like the new drawing does have the current parking lot behind cutting over, yeah, right there. Does that not cut over and connect directly to what is currently parked and wrecked? I think it, it connects the two parking lots, does it not? Yes, it does. So then I don't, to me, that's not separate.
Madam Moderator, for clarification, there's separate projects and there's separate requests.
Okay.
The fact that it physically connects is irrelevant to me, because if items one and two fail, the parking lot at Walcott, which will be discussed by several people, I believe, can be connected to the existing parking at Town Hall. So I really do think they need to be separated.
Okay, thanks. I want to remind people, you really need to speak into the mic so everyone can hear, and our, our town attorney is going to just clarify something.
Yeah, well, I actually have a question for the movement. Is it your intent that we essentially take this in two pieces and vote on it separately?
Correct.
Okay, so I think what you really want to do is divide the question. It's a different, okay, that's the motion, not separate consideration, but divide the question. It's still debatable, it's still a majority, it's just different terminology.
Okay, so does anyone else have anything else to add or ask about the idea of dividing three from one and two? Yes?
Through you, Madam Moderator, I'd just like to ask the person...
Please say your name and your...
Oh, sorry, Ann Matina, 40 East U. Road. I'd just like to ask the person through you, who just made this motion, can you clarify a little more? You say this is a totally separate. How is this separate from what they're proposing in one and two?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
The, they're separate because we've already acquired 6 Walcott Street. So this is an article relative to 6 Walcott Street, and the other part of the article is relative to three different parcels. They should not be tied together so that, that a yea vote for one of those items has to go along with a yea vote for the other two, or the other, the other one, whatever it is.
Okay.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
A question. Bernie Mitchell...
Please come right up to the mic.
Bernie Mitchell, 5 Claflin. In part three...
Can you please, I don't think people can say...
In part three that you're looking to move, have we not already paid $520,000 for that parcel?
Okay, I don't know who will know the answer to that, but have we paid for...
In 2019, we paid $520,000 for that parcel.
Yeah, go...
Yes, we did acquire it. That's the current parks and wreck.
Madam Moderator, I think there's going to be quite a bit of discussion about that acquisition. Can we just vote on, on my...
No, because we're still having discussion about it. Thank you. So we already, we already have...
We're having discussion about the thing that I want to divide.
We, that's what we're talking about now, and what I just asked the, the Select Board to clarify is, did we buy this 6 Walcott Street in 2019? And my understanding is that we did buy it, and this says, "Accept as a gift the construction on a, of a parking lot on it." Yes, go ahead. Elaine, did you want to clarify something?
Yes, thank you, Elaine Lazarus, interim town...
Yes, thank you, Elaine Lazarus, interim town manager. So this item number three allows the new parking lot to be blended into and to connect to the Town Hall property and to six Walcott property so that it becomes one seamless parking lot that includes the town property and exits out onto Walcott. Right now, six Walcott is not connected to the larger parking area.
Yeah, I don't want to, I really don't want to discuss item three right now and want it to be divided, but since we're discussing the, the, the article, item three, I got to say this, we acquired six Walcott Street for a very specific use, which was demolish the building and, and build a parking lot for Town Hall and municipal parking. We didn't do that. Somebody, I suspect the town manager, took it upon themselves to decide to rehab the building that was there and use it for Parks and Rec offices. I have no problem with Parks and Rec using the offices, but the, the use of that property was changed in violation of Chapter forty, Section fifteen, when it was supposed to go to town meeting to change the use from a parking lot to municipal offices and parking for the municipal offices. That would have come up later, but I still would like to divide this so that we can discuss that separately from the other ones. I understand it's intended to be one big parking lot, but either the whole thing fails or the whole thing passes. I think they need to be divided.
Okay, so I just want to get back to this. We are right now talking about separating the two. So does someone have something more to say about separating three from number one and two? So if, if you speak on this, that will be all the speaking you're doing on this article today.
I'm calling the question.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, so what that means is we're, we have to... So we have to have a majority of people say they don't want to talk about this again. So all in favor of any discussion about pulling three out of, or away from one and two, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we... That's what we just did.
Debate on dividing the item.
We just ended debate on whether we're going to divide three from one and two. Okay, so that was a clear two-thirds to end debate. Now we're going to vote on whether we are going to pull three separate from one and two, and is that also two-thirds? Okay, so in order to pull the three out of discussion and have three separate from one and two, we need a simple majority. All in favor of pulling those two things apart, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, so we're going to do a, we're, we're going to do a vote on this. So this is, what is required is a simple majority, and the question is, are we going to separate three from one and two? Okay. Is that a, yes, are you asking a question? Is it a subsidiary motion?
Incidental.
It's an incidental motion. Okay, so to clarify, when you vote yes, that means you want to separate them? If you vote no, you want to keep them all together? Can you open the voting, please? Okay, we're getting at about thirty seconds. If you haven't voted yet and you still intend to, please cast your vote. Okay, Nicole, you can close the, the voting, please. So again, we need, is it simple? Okay, so this is a, a simp... Okay, one fifty to one oh six, so that means that we are separating one and two and three. So we're going to start, I guess we'll start with one and two. Okay, so now we're going to open discussion about municipal parking, and we're talking about one and two. Did you have something about one and two you wanted to say?
Indeed, yes. Two fifteen, Pond Street, Peter Thomas. I have many, many questions about this, but I'm sure others do too. First, it starts with the statement. Even though the parcels are owned by different people and entities, they're all really the same, family that owns it. It's all the folks that own Bill's Pizza. And so the total assessed value of the parcels is one point seven million, roughly. The total ask is two point nine million. There's a delta of one point two million. Why are we overpaying one point two unless that includes the construction as well? And that's been bid out and everything else. That would...
That does include the construction.
Super, thank you, that makes it easy. But if you look at the warrant article, just scroll, scroll up a little bit there. Scroll up. Keep going. Says, stop, thank you. It says, "Acquire by gift, purchase, lease, eminent domain, or otherwise an interest in..." And I'd like, through the moderator, Town Council to explain to me the difference between an interest in a parcel, or a set of parcels, and acquiring the parcels. Because it makes it sound like it's a partnership, or we're, you know, how much of an interest? You know what I mean? We, I don't quite understand that.
Okay, who would answer that? What does an interest mean, Council?
It would be a property interest, so a fee interest. I, I believe what we want to have is the fee interest in the property. Whoever's planning can speak to that, but it's a property interest.
What, what does fee interest mean in English?
A fee is title to property, title to land, so...
So would we own one hundred percent of it? That's the question. Would we own one hundred percent of it? The town would own it.
I believe that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, so that parcel, the second one that we're looking at, U sixteen, one fifty-one, zero, which is at fourteen Main, has the Bill's Pizza building on it. That entire parcel has the Bill's Pizza building. So does that mean Bill's Pizza is going to be a tenant of the town and would now pay us rent for having a facility there? Are we going to destroy the building?
No.
Okay, no. So are they going to pay us rent?
They are, Bill's Pizza, I think, is keeping, Elaine, can you hold this? I think Bill's Pizza is keeping their portion, and what we're buying is, we're creating a parking lot behind the existing parking lot and then sharing that entire lot.
So, so here's the thing, though. When you look at the parcel map, and it says U sixteen, one fifty-one, zero, and I look at that on the parcel map, it is the entire parcel going from Main Street to the park, edge of the parking lot, including the structure on it. It doesn't say that it's bifurcated, where the front half is theirs and the back half is ours. It says we own the whole thing. So I'm trying to understand, maybe the article needs to be clarified, or maybe I'm not getting something here.
The article authorizes the Select Board to negotiate the purchase or the acquisition of part or all of the parcel, which is the interest in property.
Where does it say that?
Peter, may I finish my answer, please?
Please do.
Town meeting authorizes that. The Select Board will ultimately negotiate and determine what, if any, portion of the parcel it needs for the parking lot.
So, sorry to keep asking, but we're intending then to split the parcel? Really? We're going to, we're going to split the parcel?
Okay, we'll, we'll let, we'll, we'll let that...
Yes, we are splitting the parcel.
We are splitting the parcel, thank you. Because I didn't see that in the language, that's what I, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, go ahead.
Hi, Molly Myers, eleven Lincoln Street, former owner of ten Walcott Street. And I'm wondering if any information from the engineering study that was done when this was called, the Downtown Revitalization Committee wanted a parking garage there, and it failed.
Can people not hear? I'm sorry. Okay, well, you got to let us know. Thank you, can you start again?
Should I start from the beginning?
Yes, can you set her back, please? Thank you. Yes?
Thank you. Molly Myers, eleven Lincoln Street, former owner of ten Walcott Street. When it came upon the town to vote on the Downtown Revitalization Project, which was going to add a parking garage to ten Walcott Street, that was the, the initial intent of Bill's Pizza to buy our home and the adjacent lot to Bill's Pizza. They did an engineering study that showed that the water runoff would be, not be able to be mitigated from Walcott Street, A Street, B Street, and C Street. So I'm wondering if that was factored in to buying this parcel and knowing the effects that it's going to have on four streets.
I can't answer that. Yeah, it sounds like it's an engineering question, and I don't have the engineering reports from the Downtown Revitalization.
So my understanding that we're being asked to vote on a three million dollar lot that we're not referencing information that we have from a previous engineering study that showed this would not be a good location for a parking garage, and I recognize this is separate, it's a parking lot, but there still will be demolition because it's not an even grade.
Well, there's no demolition involved. This is, will be, there will be some clearing of land and that kind of thing.
It's more than that, respectfully.
Okay. If you can both direct your responses through me, please. Did you, did you have any more that you wanted to ask or say?
I would just advise people to vote no because I think this project is going to be well beyond the three million.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anne Matina, forty Eastview Road, through you, Madam Moderator.
Can you please approach the mic? I'm sure people can't hear you.
Yes, Anne Matina, forty Eastview Road, through you, Madam Moderator. I would like to ask the Select Board, similar to Ms. Myers' question regarding the previous engineering study that was done, is if you, if anyone looked at the fact that Town Meeting has voted a similar article down at least twice, two thousand thirteen, it was proposed as a possibility for adding parking to the new library addition. And then two thousand nineteen, we took it away from the, you know, the Town Meeting voted not to, to pursue it. In thirteen, I believe the price was under a hundred thousand. In two thousand nineteen, the price for this was about one point two, it might have been one point five. Now we're being asked for close to three million dollars. The other thing that I just want to point out, as someone who's committed to the history of Hopkinton, that property was the original Bridges Boot Factory that burnt down in the last major fire in town. There is a reason, I believe, that it's never been developed past where the current parking lot is. And that's because it's a nightmare in terms of development. And I personally am going to ask everyone to vote against this because I don't think it's a well thought out, well studied. I think also that it's wrong to ask Town Meeting members to subsidize a private business owner in town by developing this parking lot. And I do think that the Select Board needs to do its homework.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, Bernie Mitchell, five Claflin Street.
You, you're going to need...
Bernie Mitchell, five Claflin Street. Okay, thank you. I've been up a couple of times over the years. I do attend Town Meeting, but I only come up and talk every once in a while, so I'm a little new. All right, here we go. The calculation and the facts that accompany, the fact sheet that accompanies the two point nine seven five that we're going to pay out was one hundred and eighty-nine spots at fifteen thousand seven forty. If we include that number, plus the five hundred and twenty that we've already paid for six Walcott, that number jumps to three million four hundred and ninety-five thousand. Now, there's already spots in place there, and we're really, truly only going to get a hundred and five additional spaces over what's there in Bill's, the sixty-six, and what comes through for the Masons. And my phone shut off. Excuse me. And that got me to thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars per parking spot. I would like to make sure that everybody understands...
So, I know you have an important point and people aren't able to hear, so can you get closer to your mic or something?
Sure, to the point, I believe the true cost at, as stated from the public information is closer or over thirty-three thousand dollars per spot versus what the fact sheet accompanying this. I think that's an awful lot of money to pay for those parking spots. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator?
Yes?
Mary Arnot, fifty-one Teresa Road. I think I agree with Peter that maybe this article needs to be rewritten because when I first read it, I thought, yep, we need more municipal parking. We're going to acquire these parcels, we're going to build the parking lot, great. But we don't know how much of the parking lot we're actually going to acquire for this amount, as I understand. It's going to be under the direction of the Select Board to determine and negotiate with Bo Main, which is now the new name of Bill's Pizza. And I would like to know specifically how much of the parking lot we're going to own, and they haven't decided that yet. So we don't know what we're really paying for here. So I think we have to step back and do this all over again. And to the other points that the speakers made about whether or not we can really build on this, on the water drainage and affecting, you know, A, B, C streets, I think more work needs to be done. Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
Okay. I think, I think we need to be clear that this is a, it's a request for proposals, right? So we have, there will be a budget that it has to be within the three million, the two point nine seven five. And then it is up for, up to developers to come with plans, and they have to go through the planning board and all the various boards and engineering and all this. So the budget is the, the three million, and we're asking developers to come forth with projects. We have a conceptual plan, but that's not the final plan. And, you know, we'll be waiting for, for proposals to see what, what we select within the budget of three million.
Yes?
Kyle Smith, twenty-five Amherst, a two-part question. Would any of these spots be metered or paid in any way, or they all be free to the public?
No, they're, no, no.
Okay, thank you. And then what's the, what's the scale of the current issue that would validate a three million dollar investment? What's actually happening that would validate that?
Well, we've gone through a whole Downtown Revitalization Project. We have businesses in town, and we want people, people to be able to get to those businesses. When they get there, they need to park. And there's a lack of parking downtown. If anyone has tried to go to restaurants downtown, this has been one of the, one of the topics, that we need more municipal parking.
Thank you, okay, yep.
Thanks. Jim Cirillo, thirty-five Wood Street. I have a question, following up yours through you, Miss, Madam Moderator. What proposals are you going to be soliciting?
We're going to...
Yep.
Through the moderator. We're going to be soliciting proposals for a parking lot on these, on these lots.
That we're then going to pay three million dollars for.
To have them built.
So there's a request for proposals, right? Bill's is going to develop it. And once it has been, once it's gone through all the permitting and they've constructed it, that's when we will acquire it. We will acquire a finished parking lot.
So through you, Madam Moderator. Why are we issuing an RFP for some work that someone else is doing? In this case, the owners of the parcels.
Because we don't own the land.
Why isn't the owner of the parcels issuing the RFP?
Because we're partnering with them.
Partnering with them? All right. May I, let me say a couple of things more, please. I oppose this for several reasons, not the least of which is that it's been... I oppose this for several reasons, not the least of which is that it's been rejected by town meeting voters twice already, three times already. The cost of whatever this is that we're planning on doing has escalated from, as somebody pointed out, a few hundred thousand to $3 million. There are other less costly opportunities for parking in town, it seems to me. For example, Colella's, the former Colella's building, has an enormous parking lot in the back. I don't know if that's been explored. There's, you know, maybe an opportunity for more, to lease more parking from St. John's. There's the Center School, which has, I don't know how many spaces, but probably this many, that we could designate, no matter what happens to the Center School, we could designate as municipal parking going forward. And there just isn't enough information to support this. I'm sorry, but this is one of many articles over the time I've been in town that is so ambiguous, so unclear, and so wide open.
Thank you.
No, please, Madam Moderator.
No, I'm sorry. Your call's at two minutes, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
John Catino, 1 David Joseph Road. You know, we do need parking downtown.
Can people hear?
We do need parking downtown. You know, a couple of years ago, this did come up. There were, we had three choices, to buy a place in Walcott, to buy land and partner with Chuck Joseph and his buildings going up across the street, or to buy the area behind Bill's Pizza at the time to have parking there. The town voted for the 10 Walcott and the Chuck property. We didn't get anything out of the Walcott Street parking. We got a couple of spaces that some town employees use. They didn't tear down the building like they were supposed to. And then the Chuck Joseph properties came with restrictions that during town meeting, we never knew there were going to be restrictions. Can't park there during the day. Now, anybody that's tried to go to a restaurant downtown and tried to park at Hopkinton Drug, I'm not, yeah, at Hopkinton Drug, you got locked in or towed. We don't have that. And we can't say we're going to use Colella's parking because that's also private. Then that also got shrunk down by the stuff that happened in the town. So this might be a lot of money, but then we just talked about all of our housing prices. You know, the valuations of our homes have gone up in the last four or five years significantly, and so did this land, and so did the construction costs. We should have done this three years ago, or four years ago, or five years ago, whatever it was, not 2019, five years ago. But we didn't. I think we made a mistake. I think we should have gotten this, but whatever happened, we bought Walcott and we bought the Chuck Joseph stuff. We didn't get enough parking. It doesn't work for downtown. We're trying to have a vital downtown, and without this parking, we won't have a vital downtown. We really need it.
Thank you, yes.
Bethan Lloyd, 190 Lumber Street. I think the bottom line really is we're being asked to buy back parking places that you have taken away, okay? We've already said no to Bill's a few times. That Walcott was a complete bait and switch. We bought it for a particular reason, and the town manager decided he wanted it for something else and left us out of it. So, yeah, we're going to have a hard time passing this. We're also impacting, once again, as the downtown revitalization project did, our neighbors. You know, how many people on Main Street lost pieces of their front yard and stuff? I'm never going to vote for anything that, you know, destroys a neighborhood, and I think this will. Will we be actually doing, will we have marked places for municipal and those for Bill's? You don't know yet.
Again, we will have proposals that are going to evaluate the proposals and see which one we want, and that fits within the budget.
Thank you.
That's the process.
I'm sorry, you've spoken twice on this. Yes, you can go ahead.
Catherine Rubenstein, 49 Forest Lane. I'm actually giving this gentleman the spot, my spot.
That's not, that's not permitted.
I'm giving my time to him.
It's, that's not permitted by town meeting. Go ahead.
Ben Churko, 147 Lumber Street. Other than the Chuck Joseph property, is the town in a habit of partnering up with partner, private businesses? I just don't know that. Have we partnered with private businesses before? Is that something we do?
Around parking is the question?
Anything, anything. So is the town, are we in business with private homeowners or private businesses? And are we partners with them anywhere else other than this particular situation?
Okay.
No, no.
No, okay. Yes.
Brian Douglas, 14 Greenwood Road. Madam Moderator, I agree with a lot of the statements that were made. It's clear to me that downtown still needs more parking, and I think that's important to the general commerce of downtown. But I do not agree that this particular warrant is written in a way that is clear enough for the people in the room to make a decision, especially based on what I would consider to be past bad experiences with situations like this. So it's my personal opinion that we probably should take this back to the drawing board until we understand the terms and conditions that would surround any public-private partnership, irrespective of the actual request for proposal that's going out.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, would you please allow me...
No. No.
Hi, Anna Levitt, 6 Forest Lane. From what I have heard today, it sounds like there is potentially conflict of interest with the basically of a town by first waiting for someone, for private business to build a parking lot and then buying it back. Very limited control of the cost, so that's concerning to me in terms of what we are voting for, so I plan to vote no, and I urge others to do the same.
Thank you.
John Catino, 1 David Joseph Road. I just want to remind people that we are in partnership with Bill's Pizza right now. We lease two spaces, there are only two spaces for municipal parking in Bill's parking lot. Anytime any of us park there and go anywhere else, we're squatting. We're not doing what we're supposed to do. I do it all the time. The same thing with the Masons area. That's the Masons parking. They lease some of the spaces to the bank, but the bank pays them. And so, you know, unless we want to continue, you know, squatting or try and risk parking at Hopkinton Drug, we need some parking. Now, this may look like it's not a very well-written article, but, you know, when these things come up, being a former member of the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board, you know, like Erfan said, that it's a negotiation, and it's up to, up to that number is what the RFP will go out at. But we do need parking downtown. We don't own Bill's parking lot. Only two spaces are leased to us. So anytime you park there, it's Bill's, and they can block off the entrance if they want to, just like Hopkinton Drug did.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Peter Thomas, 215 Pond Street, through you, Madam Moderator, to either the interim town manager or DPW director. Do we plow the parking lot at Bill's Pizza, the entire parking lot?
Yes.
Do we clean that? Do we clean the parking lot as well?
Like, street sweeping?
Or anything like that? No, but just plow?
I see that we do not.
No, we do?
Okay.
Okay. So we have two spaces, but we maintain the entire space. Is that correct? Am I hearing that correctly? No, I'm not hearing that correctly. Do we just plow the two spaces that we lease? When it snows? Or do we plow the whole thing?
We don't lease, we don't lease the spaces, they just let us use them.
Okay, so we don't have, I thought I just heard Mr. Catino say that we have a lease for two, am I...
He misspoke.
Okay, so we just squatting on the whole thing? Anytime we go to town hall, sorry, through you, Madam...
Yeah.
We're squatting on the whole thing? Anytime we go to town hall, we're just borrowing Bill's parking lot for...
That's right. I don't park back there when I go there for that reason. Yeah.
Either town moderator.
But...
Either town moderator. They allow us to use two spaces.
Okay.
Anything, anything more than that, we're squatting.
Do we, but we do plow the entire parking lot?
Yes, yes, I see DPW is saying yes.
Okay, so there's a form of compensation there? Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Madam Moderator, Ed Harrow, 8 Spring Lane. I wonder if anyone remembers when we had more parking on Main Street because we had diagonal parking?
Oh, hey! I know it's getting late, but...
Madam Moderator, I'm not done yet, please. Not only did we have more parking, but Main Street was narrower, which would slow the traffic down. Thank you.
I think you've spoken twice.
I spoke on the, I spoke on the motion to remove the number three, and then I spoke on this one.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Ann Matina, 40 Eastview Road, through you, Madam Moderator. To the DPW, when I lived at 1 Claflin, I used to get woken up regularly by the street sweeper cleaning Bill's parking lot and went at like 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning. And when I complained to the town, I was told that it's town property, so we're not, we don't have to abide by any timing rules here. Then I was told, no, 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 we don't actually own it, but that's the price we pay for being able to use Bill's, Bill's lot. You know, I'm sorry, street sweeping, snow plowing, we have paid for the use of those spots in there. Thank you.
Yes?
Dorothy Maruska, 8 Alprilla Farm Road. Although I do have my questions about the validity of this, I guess I need to understand as of right now, based on what has been already passed at town meeting this year, what do we have left in cash reserves? I believe it was 5.7 at the beginning, and we've spent a lot.
So I'm, is that... Yes. Okay, I see, yes, go ahead. I just want to make sure it was in the article.
With the purchase of this article or use this article, we approve it, after our remaining balance will be $2,685,730.96.
So we had 5.7 at the beginning, we spent...
We had 9.5 at the building, at the beginning.
Okay, so what do we normally like to have left, Madam Moderator, at the end of a fiscal year in order to ensure there isn't an issue?
Our total in reserve, we like to have 5% either in our stabilization funds or cash, cash reserve, free cash.
And how much is that number?
5.8 million. That's including our stabilization fund.
So we will have how much left as of now?
That, that is the 5.8 million.
So we will have exactly our minimum amount if we do this? And there were other articles on the board for this meeting, right?
Through the moderator, we'll have 4.6 million in our stabilization and 2.6 million in free cash.
So it sounds like more, and you're at time? Thank you. Okay. Our town clerk has asked to be recognized.
I'm not speaking as town clerk. Connor Deegan, 48 Hillcrest Drive. I just wanted to very quickly say I have the pleasure and privilege to serve the town of Hopkinton and work at the town hall. It's just something worth keeping in mind, as we've talked a lot about things like retaining employees in the past few weeks. Something that makes for a really great place to work is making sure that when you actually are driving to your office, you can park somewhere that isn't a mile away. I think it's really worth noting that we are paying a lot of money for off-site parking in annual fees when we have land that is available to build that's not being used right next to our town hall, that also would revitalize the downtown businesses that we keep wanting to work at, trying to help. I think that trying to support this would be a really great idea. I agree with Mr. Catino and his assessment of that. That's all I wanted to share with that.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Rob Benson, 178 Spring Street, through you, the moderator. I wish I didn't go after Connor because he made a pretty good points there. I really, I'm also a member of the planning board, and I'm not speaking as part of the planning board on this, and I actually didn't plan on speaking on this at all, but it's very kind of obvious to me that there's all this talk of the revitalization of downtown, making it a walkable downtown. This is kind of like, this has come up several times in prior town meetings, and it's been no, no, no. So if it's no again tonight, I'm okay. But stop thinking we're going to have this revitalized downtown where parking people are going to go in a bigger way, more substantial way than they do now. And like, there's some aspect of the commercial aspect of it, commercial tax base. If people want that, then they should have, then we should vote for parking. If people don't care about the commercial interests of downtown and they don't want it walkable, don't vote for it. I don't know what I'm going to do yet myself. I haven't decided. I just know it's, you can't have it both ways. That's all I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Fargano, 17 Tamer Lane. I'd like to call the question.
Okay, so now I have to vote to end debate? Is it two-thirds or simple majority? Okay, so we need two-thirds majority to end debate. All in favor of ending debate? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're ending debate, so two-thirds declared, and so we are voting on 1 and 2 because we pulled them apart. So we will take a vote on 1 and 2, and since two-thirds majority is needed, we will use our clickers. And again, we're voting on 1 and 2 together. The green is yes, and the red is no. Nicole, can you open the voting, please? I only just now figured out that I'm looking back. It takes a while. Look here, because I keep doing this one. Okay, we're over 30 seconds. It looks like people have slowed down. Please put in your vote if you've not done so yet. Okay, Nicole, can you close voting? So for 1 and 2, I see that this did not pass, so the yes was 89 and the no was 181. So this fails. If this fails, do we also, we still, okay, so we still have to discuss and vote on 3? Is there any discussion that anyone wants to have on number 3?
Kyle Smith, 25 Amherst. What is number 3 if a standalone?
Okay, I'm going to have to look. To authorize the select board... One second, I'm, let me just ask. Okay.
So 3 as a standalone would just be to authorize the select board, as it says, to accept the gift of the construction of the parking lot, if that would even work at this point with 1 and 2 being voted down. I would just vote, or just note for town meeting now that since we are considering 3 separately and we're not appropriating any money, we're only accepting it as a gift, this particular piece of it will now be a simple majority vote, too.
Okay.
Does it even apply with, I mean, the wording says authorize the parking lot that is connected to the property at 18 Main Street? Does it even apply now?
Apparently we have to vote on it, so, yes.
Darlene Hayes...
Can you put your...
I'm short. Darlene Hayes, 1 Third Road. We bought six Walcott, so are we giving ourselves a gift if we do this? And we bought it to tear it down to make a parking lot. The town manager, the previous town manager decided to renovate it for parks and wrecks and storage, which was not the will of the people, and we've been hearing about the will of the people. I just don't understand, are we going to move parks and wrecks out now after we've renovated this old house that we bought to tear down? that we bought to tear down? But I stand opposed to doing anything with this except leaving it as it is or tear it down. I don't know what.
Okay. Yeah.
Madam Moderator, I have a question through you. Who, who is going to give us this gift?
Thank, thank you. I don't, I don't know. Do you, do you have an answer? Does someone have an answer?
Let me follow that up with asking this. Connecting the two physically, 18 Main Street Town Hall and Six Walcott. You know, I used to be an engineer. It's really not that hard to do. But is this connected to this nonsense, if you will, over at, behind Bill's? That is, the gift of this parking lot is part of the $3 million to buy the parking lot next door?
The $3 million just failed.
I understand. My question is.
There's nothing to connect it to.
There is, you can connect it to. Why can't you connect?
Because there's nothing to connect it to. It's still, it's all, and we don't own the property. It's built. We just failed. We just voted it down.
So wait a minute, we're not having a debate? Please both of you come to me.
I'm going to point one more thing out. The town had a reciprocal perpetual easement with the owners of the property behind Bill, historically, that allowed both of us, us being the town and the owners. And then that, then there was a lease, there was a new lease negotiated in 2015 to give us the two parking spaces that are spoken about. We used to have access to that whole thing and the right to park in that entire parking lot. And then the lease was, and again, I think it was done unilaterally. The lease was redone so that now we have two parking spaces. So my question just remains, is this part of the gift of the parking lot over there, this gift? We don't know, right? Just, we don't know. We'll figure it out later. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Pam Mitchell, 5 Claflin Street. Through the moderator, we purchased this property in Six Walcott Street in 2019 for the purpose of parking. And it never, in five years, there was no parking even attempted to be put there. And I really think that's a shame because at 2019, we, that is what we wanted. We had the 25, 35 Main Street and the Six Walcott. And that was what we were going to do to help with the parking problem downtown. So I think that we should support. I don't know if, in this new configuration, how it would be done. But I think we need to put parking on Six Walcott Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask a question? Is it possible to put parking at Six Walcott Street without one and two?
Well, yes. I mean, there's already a parking lot there. So parking could exist there. But number three here is saying that would make a contiguous lot. That's going to, you know, that that would be connected to 18 Main Street. So we're not, whatever we vote on, because we don't have the property at 18 Main Street now, I don't know what we'll be voting for.
Okay. So, okay. Yes.
Hey, Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis Road. Just want to apologize to all of you and to thank you for your passion and knowledge on this one. It's really clear from your feedback, engagement and discussion here that we didn't get this one right. I'll speak for myself. I, I didn't get this one right. The knowledge here wasn't something that got shared with us. And we tried to go through this one a little too fast. I really appreciate you all slowing us down a little bit, giving us your feedback, reminding us of the decisions that we've made in the past and emphasizing that we are a reflection of your will and your actions. We are accountable to you, but we are also informed by you. When this came to our committee, no one came to talk to us about the engineering study. Could we have asked? Sure. But folks, I'm not as smart as I sound. I just sound smart. I don't know what I don't know. And I benefit from your collective wisdom as much as everybody else does. This is why we come up and we beg for your engagement in these discussions. There is a way for us to get this right before we come to town meeting. So we don't have to argue, we don't have to chirp, and we don't have to challenge our officials. You're always welcome to do so. But at the end of the day, we just want to give you the things that you want and we want to get it right. So my ask would just be, help us get it right. Let's do this before town meeting next year. Let's have the conversation. Let us know how you feel and put us in a position to make decisions that reflect what you really want and based on your knowledge and desire and not just what we're hearing that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mary R. Knott, 51 Teresa Road. Okay. I don't understand who the select board would be accepting as the gift. What I heard is we own this property as a town because it was purchased at Six Walcott. So, and it was supposed to be a parking lot. So why can't we just make this section three to say that accept as a gift the construction of a parking lot located at Six Walcott Street for the purpose of providing municipal parking?
Sorry, it sounds like you're trying to propose a change in the language. And that is, that.
I don't know that I'm proposing that, Madam Moderator, because this is so confusing now.
The words, the words that are here are the words. So if you are saying any other words, that means you were proposing other words.
So we can propose an amendment to this?
I guess you could. But the way you propose an amendment is actually not coming there. It's, it's actually, you need to write it up and you need to go to the back and then.
Right. But I wasn't proposing amendment. Yet I was asking a question if this could be changed. And if somebody wanted to submit an amendment, even if they do, the first part of the section says to authorize the select board to accept as a gift. What would be, would be, what are we accepting as a gift if we own the property? This is my question.
Okay. Thank you. So, sorry, our, our town council has asked to have the chance to speak. May, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I recognize it's confusing. I mean, the warrant article had three parts because I think the plan was, is that we, you know, the plan, which didn't, you know, succeed on parts one and two, was that the town was going to acquire the parcel that is, not the entire parcel, but the parking lot that is behind Bill's Pizza next to town hall. And as a part of that, there was going to be gifted to the town. As part of that entire proposal gifted to the town, the parking lot that's referred to in part three. The select board may want to speak to this more. But I think that at this point, if, if parts one and two are dead, three is really not viable anymore. But since we divided it, we still have to deal with it. But, you know, unless somebody is actually willing to gift us the construction of a parking lot there, and I suspect that's not the case, given that the entire plan has failed, we're really not considering a viable proposal at this point. And I just, just kind of want to be clear that when we divided the three points, which were all part of a connected plan, we sort of put ourselves into this. And, and, you know, respectfully, we may want to think about moving on because I'm not sure we can even do this anymore.
Okay. And then through you, Madam Moderator, just so I understand it, we do own this parcel. It was bought by the town for the purpose of a parking lot. Is that correct?
So your, your, your time has expired and the answer is yes. Yes.
Sue Currys, 29 Forest Lane. I really appreciate the comments of town council, the gentleman who spoke at this mic right before me. I'd like to call the question.
Okay. So what that means, is it simple or two thirds? Okay. So we need two-thirds to end debate? And just so we know, we're ending debate on talking about whether we're going to vote on, so talk more about number three? Is there someone who, I need a second. Oh, Connor seconded. Okay. So everybody in favor of ending debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Everyone opposed? Okay. So we're not going to talk about this anymore. And we are just voting on three? The way it's worded here, and it's a simple majority. I'm going to get the sense that I feel the pulse here. So we're going to just do a voice vote? All in favor of number three as written here, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Please say nay.
No.
Okay. So by a voice vote, there was a clear majority saying no. So number three is a voice vote and the decision was no? Okay. We are moving to 34. I will make, I, I do want to say something about 34 even before we start talking about this. The sponsor of this article has recommended no action. And it was pulled off the consent agenda last night as part of the way we go through it. Is there a, so what do I have to do? Yes, is there a motion?
I move to introduce the article as written.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. So then what do I have to do? Have to read it? Okay. So it's, sorry. Somebody else made the motion and that is permitted. Sorry, I checked with council. Yeah, he, he had already asked for it to be no action yesterday, right? So, okay. So now, now what happened? Okay. So now there's been a, a motion made. Now there's an opportunity for debate. If you want to say something, can you go to the mic, please?
Hey, folks.
Okay. But you know what? Before you do that, why don't we have Mr. Thomas explain why he was recommending action? And then we'll have you speak.
Thank you. Hi, Peter Thomas, 215 Pond Street. I have great respect for my colleague, the Sustainable Green Committee, who has recommended no action on this. However, I, we had a discussion out in the, in the lobby. And I said, we really need to put some money into PFAS testing in this town. Well, six at Fruit Street Fields has PFAS in it. This is due to the fact that firefighter training at Pine Field, Fruit Street Fields in the 1980s, 1970s and 1980s, the firefighters conducted a gas school about 400 feet from the wellhead. I think pretty much everybody in this room knows that. So far, Hopkinton taxpayers have paid more than $1 million to remediate this problem. On June 22nd, 2023, Hopkinton resident Peter Legoy wrote a letter to the town manager, copied me on it, and the select board asking them to set aside $25,000 to $30,000 for PFAS testing. This number came from a very well-respected mass DEP contractor who does the same kind of testing. We still do not know the extent of soil contamination at that place and other places where PFAS has been detected in the town. The select board has failed to act on this. The town manager, previous town manager failed to act on this. Understanding this would be potentially helpful as our leaders work to help us recover our costs, Madam Moderator. We should not be bearing the full cost of something that the state fire academy should be helping to compensate us for. I am asking to amend this article to increase the amount to $30,000. As a town, we need to learn the extent of this problem. And that's why I asked to have it removed from the consent agenda. And, and with great respect, again, to what he's about to say, I do feel this is important that we as a town start taking control of this issue because there has been no leadership.
Okay. Thank you. So I just heard also a request to increase this. So Mike, I'll let you say your piece, too. But is there a funding source or was there a funding source initially for this?
There wasn't because Jeff Rowland, Chair of the Sustainable Green Committee, there wasn't a funding source because we chose to go with a no action route.
Okay. So whether it would be $10,000 or amended to $30,000, as was just mentioned, there is not a funding source right now identified for this? Okay. So do, do they proceed? Like what do we do now?
Madam Moderator, certified free cash. I'm getting the motion written up right now.
Okay. Okay. So, so they're, they're going to change it to be $30,000? Okay. So does that mean we hold for a minute while they're doing that? But they're, they're proposing a funding source as part of the thing?
But he's made a motion. The motion does have.
So wait, what?
So the motion itself that he moved, which is as it appears here, doesn't have a source.
That's what he's doing right now. Okay. All right. So, so what, does that mean we're not talking because he has to make the amendment? Or do we let people keep talking? Okay. All right. So, sorry, we're trying to make sure we're doing all this right. So right now what we're doing is we're talking about Article 34 as it's written because no formal amendment has been made just yet. So I can, I think I'll come to you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jeff Rowland, Chair of the Sustainable Green Committee.
Can you also say your address, please?
Sure. 14 Old Farm Road. So the Sustainable Green Committee recommended no action on this frankly because the plan wasn't ready. The, we didn't have the program fully spelled out as to how this was going to work. And through feedback with the town manager's office, appropriation committee, health director Sean McCullough, we were all in agreement that we should step back, you know, have a more carefully vetted plan, better understand the costs, the scope of the testing, liabilities to the town. So we, we do plan to move forward with toxic chemical testing. But we want to think it through a little bit more, you know, and be more fiscally responsible with the town's money before we request this. So I'll let Mr. Manning speak as to the other funding source we were considering. So the Sustainable Green Committee, again, is recommending no action on this article.
Thank you. Yes?
So Michael Manning, 32 Briar Cliff Drive.
Can people hear?
Michael Manning, 32 Briar Cliff Drive. I am speaking as Chair of the Appropriation Committee. So we did recommend as a committee, no action on this article originally. And the reason being, as Jeff Rowland had said, that we.
Can you, I think you need to speak in the mic so everyone can hear.
As presented in the warrant, in the warrant article, it was not very specific on how this $10,000 was going to be used. We were all in favor that it's a good idea to move forward or get an idea of this toxic material testing. But it's just, if it was $10,000 for a process or how you're going to go about it, but essentially saying, here's $10,000 for the health, for the Department of Health to use. And we didn't really know what they're going to use it for. Who are they going to, you know, is it just residents' request? Are there liabilities if something is discovered that suddenly the town has to be the remediator? So are there, there was no discussion with legal. So we wanted it to go through the right process through the town manager and, and, and move something forward. We gave some ideas that maybe we can have, we have a reserve fund or transfers we can do at the end of the fiscal year. But we thought passing this just by saying $10,000 now without a real explanation of how it's going to be used was not really what we were looking for in this article. That's why we did not recommend.
Thank you. I do have a question. Did anyone on the Sustainable Green Committee have an idea about when they would have a plan that was more fully baked that might be able to be put in front of the town?
Hello, I'm Donald Sutherland, 205 Winter Street, Chair of the Environmental Working Group at the Sustainable Green Committee. This is a work in progress. And we'd like to have it firmed up. And that's why we have the motion of no action. So it's, it's, it was initiated in response to the urgency of the issue.
So my question is, when do you think you would have it?
That, that's, that would probably be within the year.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Peter Thomas, 215 Pond Street. To be clear, I'm, the amount now is $30,000 when the amendment comes forward.
We're not talking about that yet.
I understand. But I'm. Yeah, I am proposing that amendment to amend it to $30,000 to come from certified free cash. That will be written up or it is being written up. But this is perplexing to me because no one's saying they have to do anything right now. This is the first time I've ever seen somebody in government or in any form not want money. I mean, like, we're just saying, here's some money. Like, you don't have to go spend it tomorrow and the plan may not be fully baked. And maybe that's not even enough. But we've got to start getting some motion on this. We have had nothing happen. In spite of multiple letters to the select board, public statements, several discussions with the town manager, there has been literally no. Am I, am I with my two minutes?
No, I don't know what happened.
No, it didn't start. So, no, it's not.
So it didn't start?
So we need to start taking some action on this now. And I'm proposing that we put some money aside to do that. And they don't have to do it today. But we want to get something going. That's it.
Okay. So I just want to, I want to be clear, we're still talking about what the, the article is, the way it's written because the amendment has not been. way it's written, because the amendment has not been made yet. Did one of you want to say something? So you have two minutes, you have two minutes to speak now, and just remember, if, as it gets amended, then you only can speak two times, so you get to decide when you want to do it.
Yes, Donald Sutherland, two oh five Winter Street. This is an important issue for the town, but we didn't want it to be something just in a loose format. We're reaching out within the town that's in a transition period, so there are various factors for the reason it wasn't a fluid process so far. So we want to firm it up for the town's benefit, and that involves reaching out to a lot of departments other than our department, our committee, and the Department of Health. So it is, it is, it is a priority for our committee. Make no mistake about it, and this will be done this year.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Mary R. Not fifty-one Teresa Road. I'm probably the last person in this room that wants to give any agency money and not have a plan in place. However, I agree, this issue of PFAS and other chemicals in our water and in our land is critical. It should have been addressed with a plan by now. I am not criticizing the Sustainable Green Committee or any of the other members. They're a wonderful committee. I would like to support, though, however, giving them, setting money aside and appropriating thirty thousand dollars when the amendment is added, so they can continue their work. And I heard that their plan may be ready within less than a year. I don't want to wait another year to vote for giving them the money. When they're, when they have their plan, they know the money's there, they can get going. Something needs to be done right away. I don't think people, everyone in this town understands how serious the water problem is in this town. And if we had some evidence to go after the state to help mitigate and pay for hooking up to MWRA and everything, we need the detail, we need the facts from this information that this money will support to get for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Shahidul Manan, two seventy-four Ash Street, Vice Chair of Select Board, but I am speaking as a private citizen, I guess. So I just wanted to point out that from Select Board, back in September, I proposed to form a PFAS slash Clean Water Council to focus on just this issue, because it is a critical issue that's affecting our lives today and will continue to affect if we don't resolve it. So there's tremendous attention that we want to, an effort that we want to put on it. So for immediate actions, we have taken care of the wells that had PFAS levels above the threshold, and that's been resolved, but we are not certainly fully there yet. This is just the beginning. PFAS problem is a national issue, is a state issue, is a many-town issue, and our town's issue. So we need to all get our heads together to properly plan for it, to identify the sources where we can, to identify the remediation. MWRA is a PFAS clean water remediation that we are working on, but I really wanted this council to get what we are trying to do here, get all our heads together, put out a proper plan and plan of action and work towards it. And now, in February twenty-eighth, I call, you know, the six months or a year a lost year in some ways, because we were distracted by many other issues that we know. But we had cranked along with the actions that we had, and in February twenty-eighth, we talked about it, I laid out the framework, it is online, you can check it out, and Elaine and I are working on holding a public forum end of May to have this exact discussion, hearing allowed, having a good plan, having a good council, so we can all get our hands together with a concrete plan and of action, concrete strategy, and move towards in resolving this extremely critical issue, not only for us, for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So this is, I just, this is the article, and, what's that? Okay. So we're not going to show until someone is moving an amendment, and so is this the article that it is currently on? I just want to make sure I'm understanding what we're showing here. Is this the article as it's currently written?
Madam Moderator, I move to amend this, to change the amount to thirty thousand dollars from Certified Free Cash, and the rest of the language stays the same.
Okay.
Sorry. Can I ask a procedural question?
Just one second.
Because I think we're doing this entirely wrong.
Okay.
The sponsor of this article is the Sustainable Green Committee.
Yes.
They have made a motion for no action.
No, they didn't.
I'm not sure, no, excuse me, I'm not sure I agree with that, but the sponsoring committee has made a motion for no action? We've had that happen at town meeting a lot before. We have to consider that before we can allow other citizens to come up and make a subsequent motion. We haven't done that yet.
So that is not what happened tonight? The Sustainable Green was not the first person who spoke tonight.
But they're on the, they're on the motions document as the sponsoring committee.
Sorry. I'd like to recognize counsel, so this was, we've been working through counsel on this, let me promise.
I know, I just want to make sure we're doing this right, because it feels like we're doing it differently than we ever have.
I hear you. Let's have the counsel.
We traditionally let the sponsors make the motions, but the sponsor, you know, the speaker was recognized on the motion before the sponsor was, and the motion was made.
So for the future, somebody could just make a motion on anything that...
If recognized by the moderator, the moderator recognizes whoever's doing it. I don't know, I didn't see it happen, but I know that the moderator recognized the person at the mic, the person made a motion. The motion is now pending before town meeting. That's, that's the procedure.
And, and we had it on the warrant, I'm sorry, we had it on the consent agenda yesterday because of the no action. However, somebody else pulled it off the consent agenda, so perhaps I should have sought out the Sustainable Green to make the motion, and I think I might have, that might have been an error on my part, but as, as counsel says, once I recognize that, then, I'm sorry, but, you know, we put this in motion, so my understanding is that we're here where we are right now.
It just feels like we're doing things, kind of, it's like Wild West out here tonight.
Well, I hear you. So, so he came and made the motion for the amendment.
So yeah, we just addressed the point of order. Now we're back to the motion. What is the...
Okay, so, so that was a point of order. Now, there was an amendment proposed, and, so can we scroll down to see what the motion is? Oh, well, the motion was take no action, but he, he brought the motion back and said that he wanted to bring it back.
The amendment is for...
Yep. So the amendment would be, well, the amendment is thirty, the thirty thousand dollars to come. Okay. So the, so we do need to have this amendment in writing, and so the...
There we go. Yes, okay.
Okay. So this is now the, um...
Yeah, we have a motion to amend.
Okay, so go ahead, do you want to explain? So there...
So we have a proposed amendment now pending to the main motion, which is displayed on the board. We debate the proposed amendment.
Okay. Did you want to say something about this proposed amendment?
Is there a second?
Is there a, sorry. Yes, there was a second. Did you want to say something related to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Rob Benson, one seventy-eight Spring Street, through you, Madam Moderator. The original, so, this was proposed by a tenant of town meeting. I think the, so this is, the Sustainable Green Committee does a lot of great work. I don't know why this wasn't driven by other departments and other groups. Like, it doesn't make any sense to me, but it's here now. PFAS is in the news all the time. The, I'm actually fairly irritated, we haven't taken, we haven't taken action yesterday. It is beyond my mind why this isn't a high priority. It is thirty thousand dollars, is point zero two five percent of the town budget. This is no-brainer. Let's get this going.
Thank you. Okay, so this, just so that everyone is clear, and I want to just say that you're limited to how many times you can speak on this. Just be aware.
But we're debating the motion now, not the...
We're, yeah, we're debating the motion to the amendment, so I just want to make sure. Are you here to speak about the motion to amend?
Well, I stand opposed to it, because...
Can you put, okay, please, put your mic down and introduce yourself.
Darlene Hayes, one third order. I'm standing opposed to it, because we go through a budget process, and I don't know where this extra money is coming from, again, well, Certified Free Cash, which is still our money, and I know it's a small amount, but the sponsors of it have taken it off the table, but we can give them more money, but they have no plan on what to do, so then who becomes responsible for executing and the guardian of this thirty thousand dollars that would be nice to have, help get us clean water, but who becomes the guardian of it?
Thank, thank you. Who, who, do you know the, what's the answer to that? Would it be Sustainable Green? Who, is it?
The Health Department.
So, so this would, what I'm hearing from here is actually town manager? That's the town manager with the Select Board. Are you speaking about the amended motion? Go ahead.
So Muriel Kramer, thirty-nine North Street, speaking as a private citizen. That was my question, so I think we need to, friendly amendment, we need to have somebody responsible for expending the funds, but I had just a question about the amendment, and is, it appears to be written to test prior to application. I just think that there's some words missing, so if it's meant to test existing known areas of concern, I just think it needs to be further amended.
Okay. So, thank you. I, I just, I'm gonna, we're just checking. Okay, I, I've been asked to get some clarification. Are you formally making a motion to amend the motion to amend?
No.
And, what's that?
I'm Ken Parker, sixty-one Clinton Street.
Hold on, could we take, just one second. Peter, would you be willing to take a friendly amendment to your amendment to clarify the language according to the way that Ms. Kramer is speaking?
With great pleasure.
Okay. All right. Shall we wait on talking more about this? Okay. All right. Yes, go ahead.
Ken Parker's, I am a member of...
Hold on one second, can people hear?
Ken, Ken Parker, sixty-nine Clinton Street, I'm on the Sustainable Green Committee. The reason we worded it this way is that we wanted it to cover previous contamination and also contamination that has not taken place yet. So we used the word "or" in that sentence there, which is now taken down, and the idea of having two phrases was for to cover two different cases. One is the previous contamination as around Fruit Street Wells, and the second was any substances to be applied in the future that might be contaminated, and that therefore ought to be tested before they were applied to the town. That's why we had the original words.
Thank you.
So I don't know that they need to be amended, but that's up to you guys.
Thank you.
Hello. Okay. Caroline Lu, eighteen Daniel Chase Road. I'm a member of the Appropriation Committee, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. So we know all the articles in the warrant document, we went through our budget process. I'm not sure this amendment here, just all of a sudden, thirty thousand dollars, without any review or anything, now we're, you know, discussing this without the proper, go through the proper budgeting process. Is this the right process to follow right now?
Thank you. Yes.
Matt Kizner, twenty-one Curtis Road, speaking as Capitol. I'm going to go ahead and follow along. This now crosses the threshold of my committee based on being a non-budgetary expense of greater than twenty-five thousand dollars. Folks, there is a reason why we don't do this at town meeting, and we do it beforehand. I agree, I share your rage, I share your irritation. Come talk to us through the other channels, please. This otherwise triggers bureaucracy, and we're not necessarily ready to support you in the way you want to be supported. As you have made it abundantly clear tonight, we don't have all the information, but I take it seriously when the wonderful people of the Preservation Committee who have been working on this tell me that I shouldn't support it. If we're not going to take the advice of the people that we have in elected positions, instead of trying to amend every single motion here, I would ask that you come and you vote and you change the people in those positions. But if we're going to relitigate their advice on every issue, we cease to have functionality for you, and I for one enjoy being functional on your behalf.
Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Kramer is amending the motion back there, but while that happens, I just want to say very clearly, our water is poisonous. I don't want to wait twelve months to come back here to talk about that again, which is why we are proposing to do something about it now with this amendment.
Okay. What's that? Okay. So is this a new language? So it's just, it just identifies... Can you speak into the mic, please?
My apologies. So the only change is to identify who is responsible for directing the expenditure of funds. I appreciate it, Ken and Linda came back as well, so it does indicate testing in any town lands or waters, and then also in any media prior to application, so I had, I had not...
Understood. Okay. So, this is the amendment to the motion? Okay. So now we are debating this. We're still debating this, the motion to amend, and the motion is to amend to this, to this language. Is there any other debate? What, and what, and, simple. Okay.
Kyle Smith, twenty-five Amherst, through you, Moderator, to, I think, appropriations. Sorry, I'm new to this. So if we don't approve money, then they can't access any funds to do the testing until a year from now? Is that correct? Are there other avenues when the plan is fully, fully baked?
Go ahead.
As we work with the Sustainable Green Committee, there are other avenues to fund this, because it was only ten thousand dollars. There's other transfers that we can do. We were just looking for a plan and a proper, you know, proper way to say how this money was going to be spent.
Okay. But if they came up with a plan in two months?
Yes. That was actually the plan.
Dan Terry, nine John Matthew Road, through you, Madam Moderator. It's my understanding that water quality is a, is a, the Water Department DPW issue, so I'm wondering if we could get an opinion from the DPW as to whether we are doing any testing now, and whether or not it's, this is a request that they considered.
So...
Water, water quality, we have, we have an agency within town that's concerned with water quality?
Yeah.
And I'm just suggesting that we try to stay in our lane as best we can here and allow that department to do their job.
Thank you. So, so I'm just getting reminded by counsel that we're talking about this amendment, so I think we have to first vote on this amendment. Go ahead, do you want to speak?
Just, just to be clear, we have a motion to amend pending, so if we decide to amend, then we can debate the merits of the amended motion, but we have not yet formally voted on whether or not we want to amend the prior motion to this one. So that's the process that we have, and that's where we're at. It's just simple, yes.
Okay. So does anyone have something to say about this amendment? And so I understand your point, but we're talking about the amendment, which is the... And so I understand your point, but it, we're talking about the amendment, which is the $10,000 to $30,000 and also who the direction is. So until we decide on that, we can't address your, your point. But we're filing it, yes.
Hello, Linda Chus, 11 School Street. I just didn't understand why it was changed from, um, Health Department to Town Manager. So through the moderator, I'd like to just understand that.
Because the person who filed the amendment, um, that is what they wrote there? That's the verbiage they chose, yeah. Connor?
I know, I'm responding to her right now.
Okay, so, so I, the, the people who, who put forth the amendment, it says under the direction of the town manager, not the Health Department, can, um, I think, Muriel, can you speak to why you chose Town Manager and not Health Department in this amendment?
So, um, I'm, uh, meant to keep the Health Department and add to be spent under the direction of the Town Manager, just as a functioning mechanism for this work.
Okay, thank you. Okay, does anyone else have anything to say about this amendment? Okay. Simple majority?
I'm here in front of the microphone.
Okay, so when we vote, did you have something you want to say about the amendment?
Why would I be here if I didn't have anything to say? Okay, m, m, my name's Ken Parker, 69 Clinton Street. I'm fine with the amendment. Uh, it is my hope that everybody in this town can work together to solve this problem. And my hope is that the Town Manager could work with the Health Department, it's a Sustainable Green, uh, Committee, and also the water people to make this happen. So I don't think it really matters.
Thank you. Yes?
Don Sutherland, 205 Winter Street. We need the Health Department on this. This is a health issue. This is not a building issue, this is not a road issue, this is a health issue. We have to have the Health Department in this amendment. It is not to be removed.
Okay, so, what's that? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and...
Shai Dolmanan, 274 Ash Street. I'd like to amend this and add Town Manager, Health Department, and DPW to the verbiage. And also, if, um, we are doing it symbolically, I think everyone supports this, we just think that, uh, it is not matured enough and well-planned enough as the sponsor mentioned. But if you want to keep a ballpark number, why not 50,000?
Okay, so, so... Oh my God, so, did he just, did he just try to amend that? When he said he wanted to amend? Yeah, I'm sorry, are, are you asking again to amend the amendment to the amendment?
That's correct. Adding three bodies and increasing...
Okay, so you, if you're gonna do that, you need to go to the back and you need to get them to put the verbiage in here. I just, I will say, guys, we're talking about, we're, we're going down, 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 because we're gonna have amendment to the amendment to the amendment, and, um, it is...
Madam Moderator, I think I can maybe offer a solution to this?
Is it about the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Mary Arnot, 51 Teresa Road. We often pass articles where we say that the money is to be spent under the direction of the Town Manager, and the Town Manager then directs the appropriate parties and people and committees, uh, you know, that the Town Manager wants involved. So, I believe that this amendment should be passed as written, and it will, I think, expedite and help the good people that are gonna be involved really focus on getting a plan in place. The money will be appropriated, that doesn't mean it's necessarily going to be spent right away, but it will be appropriated, and when the plan is in place and the appropriate people approve that plan, now they got money to move on it. And we, yes, as a town, should have been moving on this a long time ago. I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying that please support this motion so we can get this thing going and get moving on with the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Are you here to speak about the amendment?
Yes, Timothy Boyven, 41 Pinecrest Village.
Okay.
I'd like to call, uh, for a vote on this.
Okay.
Second?
Okay, he's calling, so you're calling, what, what? So the, so we're in the, uh, we're in the middle of...
I am calling for a vote on the amendment as it's written right there, so we can move forward.
Now, now we have it.
Uh, it's...
Okay, so, so unfortunately, you, you called the question before the amendment was received.
No, I didn't. I, I called it for 30,000.
Unfortunately.
Kyle Smith, 25 Amherst, called the question.
Okay, so it's...
Peter Thomas, 215, I accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Wait, now they, they changed it to 50,000. Well, so it, the first amendment was 30,000, Town Manager. Um, I'm sorry, that is out of line.
11 o'clock.
It, what, I understand that, and we're all working together, and I have a team up here that's trying to figure it out. People are amending on the amendment of the amendment, so just bear with us, it's 11 o'clock for all of us. Just a minute, please.
All right.
Yes, go ahead.
We have a proposed amendment to the amendment, we can debate that.
Um, so, what, he called the question, so did he, I think he called the...
No, well, that's your call, if you think...
Yeah, okay, he called the question on the amendment. Okay, I believe the question was called on the amendment, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, the amendment that the question was called on is here, so everybody, please read this, and we're gonna vote on not talking anymore about this, right? We're just voting on this amendment, so we're not gonna talk anymore about this amendment. Is it simple? Okay, it's simple majority, so all in favor about not talking about this amendment anymore, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're not gonna talk about this amendment anymore, so now what are we gonna do?
Madam Moderator, Peter Thomas, 215 Pond, I call for the question again.
Okay, but, w, hold on, I just need to find out whatever we're doing. One second. Yes.
So town meeting just voted to approve the amendment to the originally proposed amendment, so now we need to vote, unless we have somebody who wants to continue to debate the amendment, we need to vote on the amendment to get back to the original question.
No.
Point of order?
Yeah, we, we...
Point of order?
So wait a minute, we voted to, we voted to end debate on the amendment, now we're gonna vote on the amendment? Yeah.
Okay.
That's all we're gonna do, we're just gonna vote on the amendment. So we're voting on this, so we're not talking about it, and now we're voting for it. Is it two-thirds or, or? It's simple, it's simple? Okay.
Point of order, Madam Moderator?
Yes.
We started at 10,000, then we went to 30,000, and now somehow mysteriously we're at 50,000? I'm just checking.
That's right, it was a friendly amendment to the amendment to the amendment. So now we're voting on this, so, what, so who, someone made a motion? Okay, so now we're gonna vote on the amendment, simple, simple majority?
Yes.
Simple majority, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
General vote.
Okay, so we're gonna do a electronic vote, and we're voting on this amendment. It is, we're not voting yes or no in the end, we're just saying, is this an amendment to the article that was up there? So, can we do an electronic vote, please? Nicole?
She's working on it, just give her a sec. I know, um, so, we're just supporting whether it's this one or the original one that we're gonna vote on. We're voting on this amendment, so the amendment has been amended, now we're voting on the actual amendment. Oh, we're, so this would be it? If this passes, that, that's it? I don't think that's right. The amendment, the warrant, the main motion.
Okay, open the vote.
Okay, okay, because this is the official thing on Article 34, okay. Okay, but if this fails, then we go back to the $10,000 one. Okay.
All right. So before we go to the results of this, and, um, Nicole can, um, let's keep it open while I explain something. If this passes, then we will have this as the main motion for Article 34. If this fails, we go back to the article the way it is written in the motions and warrant. Is that not right? Oh, no, I'm sorry, it goes back to the original motion that Peter proposed, sorry, and we'll vote on that. So let's see which thing we're doing. Can we see the results? Can you close it? Sorry, thank you. Okay, so it's a simple majority was required, so, what? So now we've amended it, so now the motion in front of us for Article 34 is... Nicole, can, the, the results of that was 108 to 93, and that's a, that's a, um, a simple majority, so this is the new motion. Is there any debate on this motion? Or, did you have something on this motion?
Yeah, I have a comment. Matt Moyne, 42 Rocky Woods Road, uh, an observation and a comment.
Could you please get closer to the mic or tip the mic?
An observation and a comment. First, the observation, uh, relative to the parking plan we discussed earlier, this is the same situation. We have a plan that's not fully vetted, not fully laid out, and whether it's $50,000 or $3 million, it's the same exact situation that we just voted no on. In terms of a comment, PFAS is an emerging contaminant that the EPA is still trying to get their arms around. Uh, if we go searching for problems, we're gonna find them. If we, if we look for problems in things that we are going to apply to our lands and waters, that's more appropriate than searching our lands and waters for problems that could cost the town millions of dollars in the future.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Matthew Vronka, 6 Blackthorn Circle.
Let me make sure, can people hear?
Matthew Vronka, 6 Blackthorn Circle, uh, thank you. Uh, so I just want to point out, this is the second set of $50,000 that we've allocated that originally we weren't planning for, we added 50,000 HKM, now 50,000's here. This is money that could be useful in a free cash stabilization fund, et cetera, which has been raised earlier. But since this is on the floor now, I just asked the Town Manager how we plan to spend the $50,000.
Through me. I, I think that's kind of a rhetorical question, I don't think she's had time to make a plan. Um, is there anyone else who has anything they want to add to, um, um, hmm?
It's only my second time on this motion.
You know what? I, I'd like to have other people have the opportunity to speak, please, go ahead.
Paul Gallagher, 38 Glanton Road, um, I am a member of the Sustainable Green Committee, but I'm speaking, uh, purely for myself, I think that will become clear. Um, I, I don't see, I'm very sympathetic to resolving PFAS contamination problems. I, I don't see how this course of action or kind of aspiration would, would really help with reducing PFAS contamination in, in town. Uh, we already have done extensive testing on the raw water and, and finished water, uh, on the, uh, on the town water, and we continue to, DPW continues to do that and, and publish those results, so we're already doing testing on the, you know, the most critical uh, supply. Perhaps this money would be better spent, um, to subsidize private, people who are on private wells to, to test, but even there, quite frankly, um, the cost of, of under-the-sink water treatment is, is smaller than the cost of a single test, so it's better to just assume that you have PFAS in your water and treat, and, and resolve the problem with a, a point-of-use treatment system. So, I'm all for reducing, um, uh, for solving the PFAS problem, but I, I, I don't think this is going, going to really achieve much, so I'm not in favor of it, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Caroline Lu, 18 Daniel Shays, um, speaking as a private citizen. So, uh, two point, one is I do agree with the gentleman's on comment there. The second is, uh, where is the $50,000 come from? What kind of assessment process we went through to get to this amount? Uh, otherwise, you know, you could throw in any random number, right? Um, I hope we can, you know, the residents here can hear some, um, evidence that this dollar amount went through, um, serious consideration. What are the steps, um, involved in to come up with this dollar amount, and how it will be allocated? Uh, I mean, exactly spending on what action items? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis Road, wanted to make a point of order. During the motion discussion, you tabled a question from the gentleman in green over there with regards to wanting to hear from the DPW. Given that we have now gone through the motion discussion, I would like to reopen that and have his question answered that you previously tabled.
Thank you, good reminder, um, and the question was...
He wanted to hear from...
Is the water already being tested?
He wanted to hear from the DPW about the current testing and work that we are doing. I think it's only fair.
Okay, um, thank you for staying here. Do you mind coming up to the mic? You could choose which mic. Yeah, can you tell us about the current water testing protocol?
Uh, so we currently test the water for the public water supply in accordance with MASTEP requirements. All the results are posted on the town website, um, and we're following the state and federal
Thank you. Did, um, did that address the question that you had, Dan? Okay.
So... She's up, she's...
So you, sorry, no, Ken, sorry, um, Matt asked to have Dan's question brought up, so, so Dan, um, we had Carrie from DPW answer your question about what testing protocol's in place already? Is that what your question was? I'm just clarifying.
It, it was, but also, uh, I mean, I'd, I'd follow up and ask if $50,000 is an appropriate number, uh, and, um, i, is, are we prepared to start to test land? Because it looks like this is for land and water. It just all seems pretty ambiguous still to me in terms of what we're, we're trying to accomplish with this.
Okay, um, I guess one question, do we currently test land?
No, I will say, you, you, the DPW is not prepared to, to implement this if it's voted on as amended.
Okay, yeah, I, I know you've spoken a few times, but I cannot keep track, so go ahead.
The reason I'm speaking, Ken Parker, 16 on Clinton Street, Sustainable Green. I was one of the guys who came up with the rib, original verbiage for this motion. The whole point of this was not to say that the Water Department doesn't test the water, they do. The well water is well under control, we know exactly what the numbers are, I've looked at them very carefully, and not only are they, uh, you know, so we've got to mix water in order to, to get below the lowest standards. But the, the thing about the water numbers is they're very consistent, so I have a lot of confidence in them. However, we have not tested soil. We know we have contaminated soil. We don't know what the consequences of that contaminated soil are for, for people in, in private wells and for the environment over the long term, and there's reasons for wanting to figure that out. Now, I agree with a lot of the people here, we have not figured out exactly how to spend the money. Uh, I would argue $50,000, yeah, it's a lot of money, we don't have to spend it. What we want to have is a means to spend it if we can figure out just how to do it. Now, I have... Now, I have looked a lot into what tests can be done. They cost about $500, and the EPA is coming up with new ones all the time. So, you know, it's, it's a changing battleground for everybody. So, the whole point of this is to make it possible, as soon as possible, to, to get a handle on the contamination issues. We know we do have a contamination issue. We, we know we have one around Fruit Street. We don't know where else in town we may also have contamination issues. Now, we could be an ostrich and keep our head in the sand and, and not care about where any other contamination is, and hopefully, maybe we'll all live happily, happily ever after. But we might just save a few lives by finding a problem and solving it had a time.
Madam Moderator, Mike Trozio, 1 Colonial Ave. My question for, two, uh, two questions. First question, we have voting on giving $50,000 to a committee who doesn't want it for a plan they don't have. Correct? Is that... No, that's a yes or no question from someone.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. So, if we vote this down, we go back to the original motion, which, which is to take no action?
This is it now. We, this is where we are. There's no more original.
So, this is it?
Yeah.
So, we vote this down with them?
Then, we'll move on. Well, we'll go home. We'll go home, and then, we'll come back. Yes.
Linda Schuss, 11 School Street. I'm a member of the Sustainable Green Committee, and the reason we voted this down was not because we didn't want it, it's because we knew we wouldn't have answers to all these questions that are coming up. However, it sounds like there's enough support that allocating the money is great, and then, we can figure out what to do. We just didn't think that was an option. We had been told we didn't have a good enough plan. So, having said that, $50,000, in my understanding, didn't come out of the air, although it sounded like it did. There was a little bit of magic happening. It, it seems like the testing of the land at Fruit Street would be somewhere in the $20,000 to $30,000 range. And tests, individual tests, as Ken mentioned, if you wanna pick certain spots of water to test, or test an herbicide that might being applied that has PFAS, that might have PFAS in it, those are on the order of $500. So, that number isn't ridiculous, even though it looks like it, it came out of the air, just to answer someone's question. And we do have other areas in towns. We have turf fields that probably have PFAS in them. So, there are other areas, maybe this isn't enough, but it's a start. So, I just wanna say, it's not that we didn't want it, it's that we just didn't, weren't prepared with a plan. But if we can execute a plan after, come up with a plan on how to spend it, there has been thought put into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Don Kaiser, 16 Oakhurst Road. I like the media prior to application thing here. It's springtime. It's a beautiful time of year. Flowers every day, and cam won, and mosquito sprayers, and we don't know what poison they're putting on the property next to our lakes, on the land everywhere in this town. Some of those things may contain PFAS, but they already contain herbicides, fungicides, poisons, and we should know what those things are. And if the Board of Health wants to test those things, he should have the right to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Matt Moyen, 42 Rocky Woods Road. At the risk of being the villain here, I would like to propose an amendment to remove in any town lands or waters or... From here, after hearing from the DPW, it's clear that they're following the guidance from DEP and likely the EPA, who are the experts on the subject of PFAS at this point in time. To go searching for contaminants in lands or waters that we already know are a problem is a huge liability to the town at an unknown cost, because we don't know what the EPA is gonna expect for a cleanup, or what Mass DEP is gonna expect for a cleanup in soils. So, to go chasing and searching for a problem and spending taxpayers' money is, is a big risk. I agree with testing for application, or prior to application to town lands and waters to ensure we're not exacerbating the problem. But to go searching for a problem is a terrible idea.
Okay. So, if, it, are you formally proposing something?
I am.
Okay. So, we're gonna continue debating what's here, and when you have something in writing that you're proposing...
I'm just checking. We have five.
Is there a, okay, is that what, is this it? What you want?
Yeah, just write that.
Okay. So, can we just leave it this way for a sec? Is there a second to this motion to amend this? We need to debate it. Do people want to debate? And what we're debating is removing these words. Yes, go ahead.
Peter Thomas, 215 Pond. I'm very disappointed. To remove in any town lands or waters or, the previous speaker is implying that we are in search of a problem. Presumably, he is worried about liability lawsuit, us discovering something. There's no great mystery here. The water's contaminated. Everybody knows they ran a gas school at Fruit Street Pinefield. Like, literally, everyone knows this already. So, we're not searching for a problem. What we're trying to do is understand empirically the level that the problem is at, so that we can then litigate against the State Fire Academy. That is the point of all of this, so that we can recover our costs as a town. That is the plan. This, this idea that we're just magically looking around for problems is a fallacy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, I have a point of order, if you please.
Yes.
If the maker of the motion will accept the amendment as friendly, we don't have to debate and, and vote.
I'm sorry.
And happy birthday to you. What a way to spend your birthday.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Could you just say your point of order again?
If the maker of the motion will accept the amendment as friendly, then, there's no need for debate and vote.
No, the, the, if, if the, if the, there, there isn't, so, the, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand, the maker of the motion will accept the amendment? The maker of the motion did not accept the amendment.
He, he did not say it's a friendly amendment. Okay.
He, he, no, he will not accept it. So, we have to debate it. Now, what we're just debating is removing these words that are highlighted. So, we're debating, are we gonna remove the words that are highlighted? What's the vote two-thirds or a simple majority? Oh, God, okay. And all these fucking people. Yeah. Oh, my God. Okay. Is anyone in this line here to talk about the amendment to remove these words? Okay. Let's keep it tight. What would you like to say?
I'd like to move the question on the vote on me.
Okay. So, does anyone else have anything they wanna say about these words? Because, yep.
Yes, Madam Moderator?
No. Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Moderator, my name is Sue Currys. I live at 29 Forest Lane. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Wait, wait. The question, the question was moved. Okay, did, okay, the question was, sorry. The question was moved. Did we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, we're just gonna vote on whether we're accepting this?
Closing debate.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Closing debate. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. We're, two-thirds majority to close debate on the, just removing these words. All in favor of removing these words?
Ending debate.
Sorry. I think, do you wanna take over?
No, it's okay. Closing debate.
Okay.
Can I say? Excuse me.
All in favor of closing debate on changing the words? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So, we are not gonna debate changing these words. We're gonna vote on changing them. Okay, so, we're gonna vote on the amendment, and the amendment is this motion minus those words. And so, yes means you accept it.
You strike. The answer is to accept the amendment.
Okay. And is it, is it 50% or two-thirds? Okay, so, it's a simple majority. If we could put that back up. So, yes means you take the words out.
Yes means we strike the word.
Okay. Okay. So, yes would mean that we accept it with the words stricken, and no means we, we accept all the words. Right?
We don't change it.
What?
Ellen.
Nope. No, we're still, we're still talking about the amendment, which right now is just removing these words. That's all it is.
It's all we're voting.
So, we've had a few amendments to the things that, this is the amendment that we're voting on now. If you vote yes, it will strike those words. If you vote no, it'll keep all the words in. Right? And we're, and we're just voting on it, right? And simple majority? Okay, simple majority. Again, if you vote yes, you're striking those words. If you vote no, you aren't. All in favor of striking those words? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I think, I think it fails. So, the amendment fails. So, please unstrike these words. Okay, we're back to discussing this, this motion. Yes.
Ellen Darlene Hayes, 1/3 Road. The Health Department was put into this, and I'd like to have Sean McCullough some feedback on what he thinks of this motion, since the sponsor didn't want it.
Okay. Okay.
So, Sean, well, I'm not a resident. We had worked out a deal, or we're working out a deal with appropriations. We were in discussions with the town manager's office about how we were going to do this. We decided that the, the article as written needed, well, that we weren't going to support it, we wanted to take it off. The Health Department supports removing the article and note with no action, because we are putting a plan together. In, in theory, you know, we start working with the PFAS committee, we get that started, we get money appropriated, and then, we can start looking at this in a methodical way. One of the reasons why we haven't acted as a department is because there's a separate set of regulations for private well owners. There's a different regulation for municipal waters. There, there are so many different intricacies that need to be vetted before we spend any money that it didn't, it wasn't prudent to proceed. And just like the gentleman said about fishing for problems that you're not aware of, you know, I'm, I'm a environmental due diligence specialist, and I'm not gonna go fishing for something that's gonna put the town at risk. So, I vote, I support no action, and us moving forward as we had originally planned.
Okay. Thank you. So, I just wanna make it clear that we aren't talking about no action anymore. We're gonna address this motion as a tier. We're gonna either vote for it or against it. Yes, sir.
Zach Cosan, 8 Hazel Road. In the interest of time, I move the question.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And is it simple?
Two-thirds.
Okay. We need two-thirds to close debate. All in favor of closing debate? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We're closing debate. So, now, we're gonna vote on this. Okay. So, we are now voting on Article 34 as written here. And is it a simple majority?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do it as, we'll try it, we'll try it without the clickers first. All in favor as written? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna do the electronic voting, please. There's something wrong?
It's not working.
They're not working? Well, their voting hasn't commenced. So, again, we're voting, is your clicker working now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Please open the vote. Is your clicker working now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. If you have a clicker that's not working, please try it a second time or a third time. Your vote will only count once. It does look like a large percent of people are getting, are being able to, to vote. If, if your clicker isn't working, please go to the back table, though we want every vote to, to count.